Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Central Unified. Today is November 12th, 2024, the time is 6:00 PM. As we call to meeting to order, let the attendance show that all members are present. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correia, a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We will be opening for comments from the public. I do wish to share with the public that every individual member wishing to present today will have a maximum allotment of three minutes per person. You will not be able to defer time, so each individual member will have three minutes. And with that, we'll open up the time, Ole, if we have any comments from the public.
Thirty seconds has passed, and then we have no callers.
Thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and move to closed session, and we will be returning reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Yes
Hey
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 Tonight is November 12th, 2024. The time is 7:01 PM. To quickly report out some of the closed session items. On Item E3, we had a motion by Trustee Kerfahn, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Motion carried 7-0. And on Item E4, we had a motion by Trustee Corio, a second by Trustee Kerfahn. Motion carried 7-0. And with that, I will ask Trustee Corio to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country. In August, our seniors held their first-ever senior sunrise, where students gathered to enjoy the start of a new day and the start of the final childhood education year. Connecting with our community is a priority for us. We took a field trip to San Joaquin River at Skaggs Park. We collected over 40 bags of litter, all while enjoying the natural scenery that the river provided, as well as both kindergarten through 12th grade. They worked simultaneously to work together and create a sense of bonding. October was particularly busy for us. We started the month off with a school committee movie night, followed up by a pumpkin carving event on-site. For those who could not join, we hosted a virtual decorating contest for pumpkins. During Red Ribbon Week, we embraced the spirits of saying no to drugs by dressing up as ghosts to symbolize ghosting drugs. Recently, we visited California State University San Jose to explore educational opportunities beyond the Central Valley. We also honored our veterans by visiting the Veterans Memorial Cemetery, placing American flags at each headstones as a tribute to U.S. service members. Our art program continues to thrive. Mrs. Harris will be taking students to the Fresno Art Museum, where students will observe various art exhibits as well as conduct an art activity. We're expanding our enrichment program with the introductions of a photography club and a print club, allowing students to learn how to use technology wisely and creatively. We're continuously reevaluating our offerings to attract more students from all grade levels. Our career speaking series has also been a hit this year. In September, a U.S. Navy fighter pilot came to share his journey. And in October, linemen from PG&E came over to discuss their careers. This month, we will learn how one can pursue a career in the beauty industry for those from a cosmetologist who will be coming over to share. And December, and in December, we will have an ultrasound technician coming over to share their career. In December, CUHS will be celebrating the graduation of nine students, including myself, for graduating high school within just two and a half years, as well as three other juniors who will be graduating by the end of the school year, a full year early. I would like to express my gratitude to the CUHS staff and always being there for me. And most of all, always being there when I win and when I lose. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. My fellow peers also created something for you, which is right next to your desk. Please take it as a souvenir. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Prabhujat. Next, we invite Serena Dohee for our Executive Director of the Foundation for Central Schools.
What a tough act to follow. Good evening. Thank you, Board Trustee President Singh, and good evening, Board of Trustees. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Serena Dohee, and I'm the Executive Director for the Foundation for Central Schools. Since our last update, we have concluded two major events. Our annual State of the District, which raised slightly over $50,000. This event is vital to our grants for teachers and students, as well as our pillars. Most importantly, it helps support two of our events at the end of the year, which we'll get to in just a second. So I did want to say thank you to everyone who attended and to our amazing student performers that were also there. And of course, our donors. We cannot do the work that we do without their support. This past week, we held our annual kickoff rally for Warm for Winter. This year, it was held at Houghton Kearney School, K through 8. I believe this was their first big rally event, so it's very exciting to see everyone from their littles all the way up to those eighth graders receive a cozy fleece sweater embroidered with their school logo. Thanks to our amazing partners, Granville Homes and Assistance League, we were able to provide 2,500 sweaters and jackets district-wide to our students who need them the most. Additionally, 312 students have received $100 in school clothes thanks to Operation School Bell from the Assistance League of Fresno. I have been delighted to be tasked with finding these students and making sure that our kids most in need get an opportunity to take advantage of this. But the work cannot be done without our family outreach liaisons. So thank you, Dr. Lopez, and your team for providing the support that we need, in addition to the FOLs and our interpreters for being there for every shopping event and providing that support to our families. These organizations are a true example of what community investment and engagement looks like for Central Unified. It represents the mission of the foundation, and I am truly grateful and thankful for these partnerships. As we move to the season of giving, it is that time of year. It is holiday joy. Our food collection will begin December 2nd. At this time, participating school sites will be accepting food donations, and the Big Food Giveaway will be December 21st. Please follow us on Facebook @FoundationTheNumber4Central to stay up to date with all the information, including the type of food we will be accepting, as well as drop-off dates and how to get more information about the Big Food Giveaway. Additionally, our food pantry will be operating for holiday hours. We are very thankful that Feeding America, the Morgan Stanley Choices Grant, has extended our grant period to April of 2025. This is vital support to our pantry. So we will have a special November 20th food pantry hours prior to the Thanksgiving holiday break, as well as December 27th, following the Big Food Giveaway for Holiday Joy, to support our families after Christmas. And last but not least, seniors, alumni, and employees can expect a scholarship announcement on application details at the end of December. Our next board meeting will be in January, and community members can find this information and more on our website, centralfoundation.org. Thank you so much for having me this evening, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Trustee Correa?
I have a question, sorry. For the Holiday Joy Food Drive, that's going to be open for all community members? Or is it going to be restricted to only Central Unified families?
So it is open to the public. We will be advertising to Central Unified, of course, priority, but we will not turn anyone away. Yes, we'd like to make sure that those who need the food are coming, and they will receive the items that they need.
Okay. I know that that's been a question before, and that's changed in the past few years, so I just wanted to make clear. And then the other thing, I just want to commend you for the great work that you continue to do. I mean, this is a position that I've been on the board since we've adopted, and we've allocated funds to support the work that you're doing, and so I've just been really impressed. And so thank you for all of the work and the collaborations that you've had with our community. It really means a lot to be able to expand the warm coats for our students and our food drive and be able to provide our families who are experiencing food insecurity something to look forward to, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. It's been an honor, and I'm happy to celebrate my fifth year with the district, and it doesn't feel like five years when you enjoy doing the work you do. So thank you all for your continued support. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we invite up for our Employee Association highlights our Central Unified Teachers Association President, Laura Bolton.
Good evening, everyone. I always stumble the first thing out of my mouth when I come up this speaker. I don't know. This microphone makes me nervous. Apologies. All right. Well, thank you again for having me. I have some positives, some highlights to share with you. So these again are shared through our site reps, so this doesn't represent everything that is good in our central community, but it's the things that have been shared, and I want to make sure that you hear them. Garza had Fright Night for their students, and it was a great success. Biola sent a few of their staff members to...
And create a sense of bonding. October was particularly busy for us. We started the month off with a school committee movie night, followed up by a pumpkin carving event onsite. For those who could not join, we hosted a virtual decorating contest for pumpkins. During Red Ribbon Week, we during Red Ribbon Week, we embraced the spirits of saying no to drugs by dressing up as ghosts to symbolize ghosting drugs. Recently, we visited California State University San Jose to explore educational opportunities beyond the Central Valley. We also honored our veterans by visiting the Veterans Memorial Cemetery, placing American flags at each headstones as a tribute to US service members. Our art program continues to thrive. Mrs. Harris will be taking students to the Fresno Art Museum, where students will observe various art exhibits as well as conduct an art activity. We're expanding our enrichment program with the introductions of a photography club and a print club, allowing students to learn how to use technology wisely and creatively. We're continuously reevaluating our offerings to attract more students from all grade levels. Our career speaking series has also been a hit this year. In September, a US Navy fighter pilot came to share his journey. And in October, linemen from PG&E came over to discuss their careers. This month, we will learn how one can pursue a career in the beauty industry for those from a cosmetologist who will be coming over to share. And December, and in December, we will have an ultrasound technician coming over to share their career. In December, CUHS will be celebrating the graduation of nine students, including myself, for graduating high school within just two and a half years, as well as three other juniors who will be graduating by the end of the school year, a full year early. I would like to express, I would like to express my my gra- I would like to express my gratitude to the CUHS staff and always being there for me. And most of all, always being there on when I win and when I lose. Thank you for your time and I hope you have a wonderful evening. My fellow peers also created a, created something for you, eh, for you, which is right next to your desk. Please take it as a souvenir. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Prabjit. Next, we invite Serena Dohe for our Executive Director of the Foundation for Central Schools.
What a tough act to follow. Good evening. Thank you Board Trustee President Singh and good evening, Board of Trustees. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Serena Dohe and I'm the Executive Director for the Foundation for Central Schools. Since our last update, we have concluded two major events. Our annual State of the District, which raised slightly over $50,000. This event is vital to our grants for teachers and students as well as our pillars. Most importantly, it helps support two of our events at the end of the year, which we'll get to in just a second. So I did want to say thank you to everyone who attended and to our amazing student performers that were also there. And of course, our donors. We cannot do the work that we do without their support. This past week, we held our annual kickoff rally for Warm for Winter. This year, it was held at Houghton Kearney School, K through 8. I believe this was their first big rally event. So it's very exciting to see everyone from their littles all the way up to those eighth graders receive a cozy fleece sweater embroidered with their school logo. Thanks to our amazing partners, Granville Homes and Assistance League, we were able to provide 2,500 sweaters and jackets district-wide to our students who need them the most. Additionally, 312 students have received $100 in school clothes thanks to Operation School Bell from the Assistance League of Fresno. I have been delighted to be tasked with finding these students and making sure that our kids most in need get an opportunity to take advantage of this. But the work cannot be done without our family outreach liaisons. So thank you, Dr. Lopez, and your team for providing the support that we need in addition to the FOLs and our interpreters for being there for every shopping event and providing that support to our families. These organizations are a true example of what community investment and engagement looks like for Central Unified. It represents the mission of the foundation and I am truly grateful and thankful for these partnerships. As we move to the season of giving, it is that time of year. It is holiday joy. Our food collection will begin December 2nd. At this time, participating school sites will be accepting food donations and the big food giveaway will be December 21st. Please follow us on Facebook at Foundation, the number four central to stay up to date with all the information, including the type of food we will be accepting, as well as drop-off dates and how to get more information about the big food giveaway. Additionally, our food pantry will be operating for holiday hours. We're very thankful that Feeding America, the Morgan Stanley Choices Grant, has extended our grant period to April of 2025. This is vital support to our pantry. So we will have a special November 20th food pantry hours prior to the Thanksgiving holiday break, as well as December 27th, following the big food giveaway for holiday joy to support our families after Christmas. And last but not least, seniors, alumni, and employees can expect a scholarship announcement on application details at the end of December. Our next board meeting will be in January and community members can find this information and more on our website, centralfoundation.org. Thank you so much for having me this evening and please let me know if you have any questions.
Trustee Creo?
I have a question, sorry. For the Holiday Joy Food Drive, that's going to be open for all community members or is it going to be restricted to only Central Unified families?
So it is open to the public. We will be advertising to Central Unified, of course, priority, but we will not turn anyone away. Yes, we'd like to make sure that those who need the food are coming and they will receive the items that they need.
Okay. I know that that's been a question before and that's changed in the past few years. I just wanted to make clear. And then the other thing, I just want to commend you for the great work that you continue to do. I mean, this is a position that I've been on the board since we've adopted and we've allocated funds to support the work that you're doing. And so I've just been really impressed. And so thank you for all of the work and the collaborations that you've had with our community. It really means a lot to be able to expand the warm coats for our students and our food drive and be able to provide our families who are experiencing food insecurity something to look forward to. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. It's been an honor and I'm happy to celebrate my fifth year with the district and doesn't feel like five years when you enjoy doing the work you do. So thank you all for your continued support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we invite up for our Employee Association highlights, our Central Unified Teachers Association President, Laura Bolton.
Good evening, everyone. I always stumble the first thing out of my mouth when I come up this speaker. I don't know. This microphone makes me nervous. Apologies. All right. Well, thank you again for having me. I have some positives, some highlights to share with you. So these again are shared through our site reps. So this doesn't represent everything that is good in our central community, but it's the things that have been shared and I want to make sure that you hear them. So Garza had Fright Night for their students and it was a great success. Biola sent a few of their staff members to attend the PBIS conference in October and they really appreciated that. They said it was a really great conference. Several of our elementary schools had Halloween and trick-or-treating type activities. Roosevelt, their preschool, worked really hard with their SDC students to practice trick-or-treating. And then they had them go classroom to classroom practicing trick-or-treating and were able to go home with a bucket of candy, which is really kind of special because some of these kiddos may not be able to do this at home. And so it was their opportunity to do this in a supportive environment and experience the joy of Halloween. Central Elementary had a Pie the Principal event for students who donated candy for their trunk-or-treat. Steinbeck held their first ever trunk-or-treat event. Teague hosted its annual trick-or-treat event where they go through the school trick-or-treating and it's hosted by their parent club. McKinley and HK both shared that their volleyball teams won their division championships. McKinley shared that they got their math tutor onboard and a new K-2 SDC teacher that was sorely needed. HK also shared that 66% of their EL students scored proficient. I think that was probably on the end of Sback last year, but maybe it was iReady. I'm not 100%. They didn't tell me that part. And then our psychologist shared that the BATE teams are going really well this year, that camaraderie as a sped team and on IEP teams and collaborations are going well. They feel that communication at the site level is getting better at some of the sites and that they're doing more to try and meet the needs of kids before rushing to assessments. And then they said that collaboration with teams, including program specialists are good. I want to share two Cuda-specific positives. This evening are actually possibly overlapping with this board meeting. Some of our teachers were able to take advantage of a free generation debt student loan forgiveness workshop. So we're doing what we can to help them to take advantage of the help that is available to them. These programs are really wonderful. I was actually a recipient of the earlier version of these and it helps our teachers who are already working with low-income students to be able to get credit for that time and be able to then get some credit back on their student loans. So they're working for it. After years of advocacy by CTA and NEA, the Social Security Fairness Act, HR 82, finally came to the House floor this week. We put out a call to action to ask our membership to reach out to their congressional representatives to please return to Washington DC and vote yes on HR 82. The Social Security Fairness Act would make it so that California teachers and public servants, so not just teachers. My dad is a retired firefighter, public servant, and this affects him too. And that they deserve their full social security benefits. So what this means, what we're pushing for is full social security benefit for those who have earned it through their employment. Some of our teachers are second-career folks or have second jobs, have post-retirement jobs in, after they are done with education, but continue to work. And they have those social security benefits taken from them or reduced. So and they also don't receive full benefit from their spouses' social security benefits. So it protects their retirement and we really want to end these double penalties for California educators and other public servants. So we really have pushed hard for that. So I haven't had a chance to see if the vote went through today, but I'm hoping that it was a good outcome. If not, we'll continue to push. So thank you.
Thank you. And while CSEA President Angie Geary is not here, we want to appreciate and recognize our partners in the California School Employees Association. We next turn to our reports with our first school report, being led by Principal Diaz from Roosevelt Elementary School.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. I am Principal Diaz and I'm excited to be here today to share some of the great work that we're doing at Roosevelt. And I also want to thank my staff for coming. They're really excited about the work that we're doing and leaning in. All right. So this year, we took a deep dive into our data currently on our Sback. We're 20.6% in ELA, 14.4% proficient in math. So we really took a dive and seen how we could best support our students. So some of the action items that we have put into place for this year is on-grade level instruction with weekly common format assessments, including our IABs for ELA. We have a focus on literacy. Also, reteach opportunities based on data. For math, some of the action items we have taken is that focus on daily math problems using our CGI strategies and also making sure we're using our IABs and looking at the rigor of the assessment and using that data for our reteach opportunities. Some of the other action items that we have put into place is also when we looked at our data, we're doing a lot of great work with our primary grades, but also recognizing that we need extra additional support in those grades three through six. So we're able to contract with teaching fellows and get them in the classroom, providing that small group instruction. Also, on our professional development days is providing that extended PLC time for our staff to look at the data and really plan for the next week to see what are some of the things that our students may need a little additional time. But also our students' academic achievement award recognition, really celebrating the students. So some of the things that our team has come up with is, you know, we have an iReady assembly that we do in the wintertime to promote that for our students. And one of the things that we started last spring was also our Sback kickoff field day where the students really enjoyed that and it got them excited about taking the Sback. For engagement, coming in second year at Roosevelt, we've done a lot of great work with connecting our students to school. Our attendance is up at 92.6% and also our chronic absenteeism is down 8.4%. In the last two years too, I think one of the things that I really want to highlight is as we're connecting the students to school is really maximizing the resources that we have, whether it's our family outreach liaison making those phone calls, our office staff and administration, finding out, you know, what is kind of getting in the way of getting the kids at school and also implementing those culturally-affirming practices in the classroom, like having choice. So those culturally-affirming practices also in the library, making sure that we're celebrating the cultures and having a variety of books for our students. And also our PBIS activities and awards and assemblies to connect the students to school. One thing that we're really excited about is we were just named one of the Platinum Schools. In the last two years, we've done a lot of work with our restorative practices and conflict resolutions and trying to really educate the kids and getting them excited about school. We, two years ago, we were at 53 suspensions. We were able to get down to 220. That's a 33 decrease for our students. But we've done it in a great way, you know, with our staff from TK through sixth grade, really coming up with different things. One thing that we started this year too was we started our PBIS newsletter where we highlight different students and also send that out to our families and send out great communication of some of the great activities that we have for positive behavior for our students. Last year and continuing this year, we've done a lot of work with vertical alignment within the site, making sure that we're working as a team because we all have a common goal for our students and that's for them to be really good academic achievers in the classroom. So currently, we have nine out of 10 of our teachers in K through three going through the Letters coursework. Also implementing UFly where we're working on those foundational skills in K to two with Fidelity. We're also working with our AMPAC tutors with tier-two instruction where they pull students in and they work collaboratively with the teachers and we push the students in. Once they're making progress, we get them back in the classroom and we do, we continue that tier-one and tier-two within the class. Our reading lab teacher, we pull students out, but we also push in. So if there's some students where we feel like, hey, we could keep them in the classroom, we don't necessarily have to pull them out, we're pushing in. And also working with our ELD right now, we're doing a lot of work with text reconstruction with our English learners. We're working on writing all the way from kindergarten through sixth grade and also working with our instructional coach. She's supporting with literacy K through six and training our instructional aids that we have onsite in our primary grades and also our teaching fellows. So this work that we started last year, we're already seeing a lot of progress. I want to highlight that. Last year, at the beginning of the year, in first grade, because we started this in kindergarten last year, 87% of our students were at grade level or above. And currently here at the beginning of the year, we're at 94%. In second grade, last year at this time, we were at 58% of our students and right now, we're at 70% of our students on grade level are making progress. And also in third grade, last year at this time, we were at 38% and we're currently at 62. So we're really excited about the work that the team is doing. You're kind of seeing that double-digit growth with our kids and we want to continue this work. So accountability and continuous improvement is that professional learning. We want to continue what we're doing. We have a great foundation that we have implemented. So our professional learning is around the grade-level curriculum in ELA and math. Also, our PLCs, we're working with Solution Tree. Last year, we were working on common agendas. This year, we're working on common formative assessment because it is different for different grades, right? I know in K-2, we use our UFly data where teachers are constantly checking. But then our 3-6, we're using our Wonders weekly assessment, but also using the IABs as we're getting students ready for the Sback. And also continuing that growth for our whole staff with the Science of Reading, continuing that PLC work with common formative assessment and really looking at that data every week and identifying student needs. Like what are some areas that maybe the students need a little bit more supported and things that we need to reteach? For classroom support, you know, as a principal and our vice principal is getting into the classrooms and also protecting that time and really trying to be at every PLC. We have PLCs on Monday and being there to support our staff. And making account for kids is here at Roosevelt this year is really about bringing community together. We're new to community schools, but we have our family outreach liaison. We're doing a lot of work with connecting our families with resources, with food, clothing, backpacks. Also putting together different nights where we bring families together. So Family Literacy Night with our expanded learning program. Also teaching the kids about community service with the You Matter Day, working with Success Together where we're putting together our first Family Science Lab Night. And also continuing those programs that we have with our PTA with Family Art Night, trunk-or-treat, spring carnival, and movie night. And really want to get the kids and our families connected to the school. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Creo?
I'm excited to hear about that double-digit growth. So any insight as to what has worked, what is really driving that growth in the students?
Getting them excited about learning. Our staff has done a really good job of coming up with different things, like assemblies, but also having that consistency and that team buy-in. You know, our teachers really are appreciating that Letters training and they even meet on their own. So they meet before school and go over like the strategies that they have learned when they go to the cohorts, but that consistency of, you know, where we want to go.
Awesome. You mentioned ensuring that our teachers are teaching at grade level and practicing culturally-affirming practices in the classroom. Can you talk a little bit about what your role as a principal is in supporting our teachers? And I would hope our staff as well. So expanding not just our teachers, but our classified, our confidential employees to make sure that across the board, everyone is engaging in culturally-affirming practices?
Yeah, well, providing those opportunities, professional development, going into the classrooms and seeing that, giving them that feedback. But then also meeting with them when we have our PLCs, seeing what the needs are, whether the need is in the classroom with the curriculum or also the need is like, you know what? We need to provide a little bit additional more support with some of our instructional staff. So that constant feedback with them and that transparency of where we need to support.
Awesome. My final question is related to the reduction in suspensions. Congratulations. That's awesome. I personally love hearing that information. But I think one of the misconceptions is we're decreasing because we're not suspending students who are being disruptive or engaging in behaviors that would typically be suspended. So can you talk about, I know you talked about PBIS, you mentioned some of the other programs, but maybe what does the acronym stand for and for the parents and students that are here with us today? What are you doing differently? And it isn't a matter of, we're just allowing kids to be disruptive and remain in the classroom, but actually engaging in other practices?
Yeah. So the Positive Behavior Interventions and Support is really looking at and getting the feedback from the students, right? When we have these activities for PBIS, we really want to look at things that are grade-level appropriate. So for example, when we have our students in TK through second grade, they like to do things like the chalk, tape the principal to the wall, like those type of things. And with our older kids, like the feedback that we've gotten is they really want to have like a dance. They want to have the, you know, the glow-in-the-dark dance in the cafeteria. And also they want to do things that are a little bit more competitive. Just the other day, that's kind of how we split it up was TK through second grade, they did the tape the principal to the wall. Then our upper grades, they like to do a lot more of the competition. So they had more of a field day where they're playing volleyball and things like that. But I think it's also educating the students that, hey, we can have fun and do different things. And like you said, because I don't want people to think that, hey, we're not suspending, but it's looking at appropriate consequences for the kids, but also educating them through those restorative practices on how to deal with conflict. I think that as kids are getting older and learning to play, it's kind of not just teaching them the education, but teaching them how to interact with their peers and how to deal with conflict where they're playing basketball on the court. Sometimes it gets a little intense, but teaching them how to compete and still be a good friend.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Diaz. With that being said, I just had a couple of questions that obviously stuck out. I'm just curious to see, we went down 2.9% in ELA and 2.3% in math. What do you attribute that to? And secondly, are we providing you with what you need to be able to turn that around? The resources, the professional development, small learning groups, whatever it may take? So it's a twofold question. I apologize.
Yeah, no, I'll start with the second question first. So I appreciate, because you guys, we have a lot of great resources. I appreciate having the instructional coach, our ELD teacher. I think some of the missing pieces as we're working together is just having that vertical alignment within the site and exposing the students to the rigor of what the assessment's going to be. I know last year, we worked hard on giving the kids the FIABs, but some of the things that we found was that if we want to be consistent and catch some of the students that are falling a little bit behind, is being a little bit more strategic and having more checkpoints to catch it before it's too late. Because sometimes when we do have some of those assessments, like for iReady, we do one in the fall, we do one in the spring. But we wanted to have more checks in there so that way we can target those students and provide them that small group instruction that they need.
So what do you attribute it to?
I attribute it to just the rigor. I think it's us working together, having consistent on-grade level instruction.
And please do not take these questions as an attack. We're truly trying to do the best we can to make decisions that will provide the resources. You need to turn that around. So it's not an attack. We just really want to work together.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate the supports that we have because I know our staff has really leaned in and we appreciate, you know, the additional trainings that we've had on the Wonders curriculum and then all the work that we're doing with math, making sure that we're vertically aligned.
Thank you and appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Trustee Corfante?
Thank you, President Singh. Other trustees have already said what I was going to say. But again, just we're hoping that, you know, next year, these scores for ELA and math go in the opposite direction. And just as we all know, that you have the support of the teachers at Roosevelt. But we want to reiterate that you have our support as well. So whatever you need or innovative solutions to improve our test scores, we want to make sure that you have all the tools you need so that next year we can have higher scores.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Principal Diaz. And thank you to the Roosevelt team for joining us this evening. And thank you to the Roosevelt team for joining us this evening. Next, we invite Principal Ginger from Hanfontili Elementary School.
Am I on? I'm on. All right. Good evening, Board President Singh, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. I'm pleased to report all the great things happening for our community of learners at Hanfontili. Over the past three years, we have historically hovered around the thirty percent proficiency rate in ELA according to Sback and are making small areas of growth and improvement in proficiency rates in math, increasing a total of seven percent over the last three years. While we have made some academic strides and growth, we recognize and realize that we have many opportunities for growth and advancement. Some current opportunities and initiatives we continue to work on to support this growth include classroom observations and walkthroughs. To ensure consistency, collaboration and support in tiered instructional practices, the administration team has increased classroom walkthroughs to support calibration among administrators to ensure uniformity and identify areas of additional professional development and provide feedback and support to our hard-working teams. We have also committed to providing and engaging in ongoing professional development to continue to support our literacy rates in reading and math by having all grade-level teachers and instructional aides in TK through first grade continue to engage in district-wide math professional development in alignment with our district math goals. Along with nine of our teachers and one administrator engaging in the P2CC, the three-six CC, and/or the math professional development at Fresno County Superintendent of Schools to support bringing research-based, high-leverage instructional practices into the PLCs and classrooms. With over half of our transitional kindergarten through second-grade teachers engaged in letters training, along with myself, we are committed to implementing Science of Reading practices to increase our students' ability to read on grade level by third grade. To enhance instructional alignment- I'm going to fix this really fast. Okay. To enhance instructional alignment and effectiveness, we continue to foster the growth of our professional learning communities, our PLCs, with the support and assistance of our Solution Tree coach provided by the district. Our teams are currently planning unit plans that focus on priority standards, ensuring that instruction and assessments are aligned with these standards, developing and analyzing common formative and summative assessments to measure student progress consistently, and encouraging collaborative planning and reflection among grade levels to identify effective instructional practices and strategies to support an increase in student learning. There is an intentional and instructional focus on differentiated small group instruction that includes rigorous academic tasks aligned to standards for both students engaged in small group work- sorry, I thought I was on the wrong one- and those working independently. Ongoing support through PLC conversations and professional development will ensure that all students are challenged and engaged regardless of their learning environment and provide teachers with the tools and support needed to facilitate the small group instruction. Lastly, a newer initiative is to strategically and intentionally motivate students and recognize their achievements through ongoing recognition and incentives of goal achievement, whether it is through academic achievements such as improved mastery of specific skills or behavioral achievements, including our PBIS events and/or attendance. This recognition may look like incentives such as special privileges, awards, and community recognition to celebrate their success. Student attendance plays a significant role in academic achievement and we are continuing to make progress at increasing our daily attendance rate and decreasing our chronic absenteeism rate. Over the past three years, we have managed to increase our daily attendance rate by two percent and decrease our chronic absenteeism rate by five-point-four percent. This year, we have started recognizing students' monthly attendance. At the end of each month, students who have perfect attendance receive recognition and our, and our community is updated on our progress towards our overall goal through Parent Square. Our students love these small tokens of achievement and ask what the reward will be for the following month. We have also built a comprehensive team to support in identifying attendance barriers, providing support and resources, and creating inclusive and positive environments where students feel like they belong. This team consists of our intervention specialists, our family outreach liaisons, our liaison, excuse me, our teachers, and other support service providers on campus. Through our school plan for student achievement, we have been able to employ an intervention specialist, Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong works closely with students to set personalized attendance goals, fostering a sense of ownership and motivation. Regular check-ins and progress tracking helps students stay focused on their objectives, leading to increased engagement and commitment to regular attendance. He also is able to provide a safe space and supportive environment where students and community members can openly discuss the barriers to attendance. This space encourages honest dialogue, allowing him to understand and communicate to our team the root causes of absenteeism such as family issues, health issues, or transportation challenges. He also, he is also able to support engaging in home visits to assist families and students in a very different capacity. Our family outreach liaison, Mr. Rodriguez, has been integral in removing barriers for our students and family members. Through discussions with community members, our comprehensive team, or parents and guardians themselves, Mr. Rodriguez has been able to identify specific barriers and collaborate with students, families, and community resources to develop tailored solutions. He also has been integral in increasing our parent engagement attendance within our critical parent committees such as our ELAC, SSC, and our monthly morning parent classes and evening family nights in partnership with Success Together. In a continued effort to ensure all students feel safe and supported at Hanfontili, our teachers and staff have committed to creating a safe and positive environment where all students can learn through the following. Teachers and students developed classroom respect agreements which are showcased in every classroom. By involving all students in the development of these agreements, they have felt a sense of ownership and created a sense of unity and teamwork where everyone works together toward a common goal. Students engage in monthly lessons that encompass the four character traits of empathy, kindness, respect, and responsibility. Each month, two students are selected from each class that exemplify these traits and are celebrated. We have comprehensive youth services, All for Youth, and the SAFE Team supporting our students and community as well. Just recently, we have partnered with All for Youth and are capitalizing on their Tier Two support through a wellness coach to assist in teaching lessons in classrooms and running small groups to support students' self-regulation skills, executive functioning skills, communicating with one another, and social norms. We understand the need to continue, to, we understand the need to continue to intentionally focus on literacy. This is crucial because it lays the foundational skills necessary for academic success across all subjects. Our staff understands the importance of professional development and continuous improvement. As mentioned earlier, seven of our ten TK through second-grade teachers, including our reading intervention teacher, are engaged in their second year of letters training, along with myself, starting the administration cohort this year to better serve and support our staff and students. All of our kindergarten through second-grade teachers are piloting either Ufly or ninety-five percent group, and students are actively engaged in explicit phonics instruction daily. Our reading lab supports eighty-one students in first through fifth grade. Our lab is fully staffed with our reading intervention teacher, certified personnel, and a teaching fellow who has been trained at our site. The lab's focus is on foundational reading skills, fluency, comprehension, and writing. Thirty-five percent of our students serviced in our reading lab are English learners, working not only on foundational skills, but also language acquisition and vocabulary to support in working towards mastery of the rigorous Common Core standards. Forty-seven students in first through third grade are receiving extensive reading instruction with our AmeriCorps tutors. We have three onsite who work in conjunction with our reading intervention teacher. We are appreciative of the support of the district in providing Hanfontili with an EL teacher who supports in co-planning and co-teaching designated and integrated lessons within the classroom. She is also integral in supporting our newly-arrived students and families through building foundational skills during differentiated small group instruction and welcoming, welcoming our newly-arrived students and families to campus through critical meetings where, as a site, we can gain insight on what families need, how we can support them, and students' level of understanding in their home language. Small group differentiated literacy instruction in the classroom takes place daily and is monitored by site administration to provide support and feedback to teachers and students. Teachers have access to the iReady Teacher Toolbox. This resource assists teachers in identifying research-based, on-grade-level, small group instructional materials that are directly aligned with Common Core standards. Our professional development this year aims, this year aims to enhance student achievement by integrating high-leverage instructional practices that have been proven to significantly impact student learning outcomes. Our PD has also emphasized vertical articulation and planning to ensure seamless transitions and consistent on-grade level instruction across all grade levels, aligning curriculum and instructional strategies to support continuous student growth. Through our site leadership team, we have recently identified a targeted change idea focused on literacy improvement and language development through students engaging in intentional academic discourse. This work ties in with our PLC work and collective commitments. Our teams have embraced this process and are working extremely hard to ensure the best for our students. Teams are creating common formative and summative assessments aligned to learning targets that were derived from unwrapping the priority standards. PLCs are prepared to engage and analyze common data to identify misconceptions, successful instructional strategies, and ways to intervene before their summative assessment as prevention is the best intervention. Students are actively engaged in reteaching through small group instruction and can retake their assessments. I was just in a classroom where students were celebrating their growth and analyzing the practices and strategies that supported them in meeting their academic goals and learning targets. There is truly nothing better than having students articulate their understanding of their learning and achievement. And lastly, making account for kids. While there is a heavy emphasis on student achievement and our staff and students are working extremely hard at achieving their academic goals, we also are celebrating the diversity we have on campus, the positive choices students are making, and the community as a whole. We are a community school and look forward to continuing to work with our community to identify the areas of support through ongoing needs assessment conversations. We look forward to these collaborative conversations and efforts to best serve our students and community. In the meantime, we have implemented some of the input that was derived from our community school's needs assessment meeting last spring. We have implemented monthly art contests that support the diversity of our students and cultures represented at Hanfontili. Our students and community members have expressed this interest and their appreciation for these contests. We have a large population of students who love a variety of sports. During lunch recess, we provide a variety of organized sports from flag football, soccer, basketball, and yes, foursquare. Our students love to play and I have learned very quickly that they have no mercy when playing with their principal. We continue to partner with Success Together to provide monthly parent classes in multiple languages that encompass many different topics such as how to help your kids with their schoolwork even when you're stuck, highly effective ways to raise a successful reader for life, and parenting in the app generation. We also have evening classes for the family that encourage learning together. Topics include family reading adventures, a family math lab, and our community's favorite, the Family Science Lab where they get to construct volcanoes. Our community loves these monthly classes. We recently held our first coffee and chat with the principal. It was very informative and refreshing to connect with our community and receive input and information from them. I look forward to providing this space monthly for our community. Our quarterly PBIS events are epic according to our students, with our last event being a glow, glow-in-the-dark dance and our next being a winter wonderland bounce house day, our students are working hard at meeting their PBIS criteria. Lastly, we have two new clubs on campus. Two teachers were awarded a grant from the Foundation for Central Schools to start a garden club. It is in the planning stages and we are excited about kicking this off. Our robotics club started small last year and has turned into a full-fledged team and will compete at the district level for the first time this November. We are hard at work for our students and appreciate all the support from the district and the board. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, President Singh, and thank you for the presentation, Principal Ginger. For those who aren't familiar, Tilly Elementary has one of the highest unduplicated counts in the district, some of the most underserved students. So the work you and your team at Tilly have put in and the results have been tremendous. I love seeing the decrease in absenteeism and the significant growth in math scores this year. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And I've had the chance to, you know, do tours of the school and meet some of the two students and the teachers. For example, Sang Fong, the reading intervention specialist, Ms. Albrecht and Ms. Castor, all doing great work. So just want to make sure we give flowers to the Tilly community. And you mentioned that you started the coffee and chat with the community. So I know as a community school, outreach and engagement is a huge aspect of how we're going to better serve our students. What are some of the concerns or barriers you've been hearing from parents, from the community?
So the first coffee and chat was really just to get to know each other, build relationships. We did talk about attendance and what those barriers may be. A majority is a transportation issue. There are some other issues that are kind of post-COVID. Families are still feeling a little uneasy sending students. So we're just trying to remove those as much as we can by ensuring them that we got your babies. We're going to take good care of them.
Have there been any concerns with safe routes to school for Tilly? I know we've had the street lights down and still not up yet. That's not on you.
That has not come out. In the next coffee and chat will be more like open forum. We really wanted to kind of tackle some of the attendance barriers just because we want to be able to remove as much from our community as possible in terms of a barrier and providing resources. So I can add that to the agenda for the next chat.
Okay, great. And then what would you say, because we see a significant growth in math, what would you particularly attribute that to?
I would, our staff is working extremely hard at aligning their practices with the standards and the common formative assessments. And last year, we, as a site, focused on math priority standards with our Solution Tree coach. And so I attribute a lot of that growth to just teachers understanding that the assessment and the instruction go hand in hand. And through the use of word problems, we've kind of really threw our kids into word problems as well.
Nice. Well, I appreciate the positive outlook with our Tilly teachers and being willing to use a data approach and change what's not working to improve student outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Ginger. Appreciate you taking the time out tonight.
Thank you.
And with that, we turn to our superintendent and board communications.
All right, I've got a coordinated effort here. I'm going to go ahead and queue up a video this time to bring you a little bit of a celebration. Last Thursday and Friday, I attended, along with fifteen other superintendents for around the state of California, an improvement event, a roundtable talking about best practices. And the event for all of the individuals in participation started off with a video about our school district. California Ed Partners is looking for spaces around the state who are making movement in academics and specifically in mathematics. And so I wanted to share this video of our students and our teachers with you as well.
To test things out, to try things out, to make attempts at different ideas and different approaches in the classrooms. We want to see for ourselves that, what does this activity look like and do I actually see a positive impact in my students?
The convenings have been very enjoyable and the reason is, is because we're getting to meet other school districts from around the state who are also doing similar work or the same work. And we've been able to share resources.
It's nice to collaborate with everyone and get different perspectives and get new ideas from other people. This is such a foundational skill for the students to have. Their minds are like sponges and they need these skills to prosper and grow into the grades that they're coming into. It teaches them- It teaches them social skills. They're learning to collaborate with their peers, and that's going to help them in any grade that they go into.
For the first year, it was difficult. It was noisy and messy, but I feel like the more that they've done it, the more it's still a little noisier, it's still a little messy, but it's not goofy noise, it's math noise and math conversations.
Are you sorting in fives? Are you also sorting in fives?
Yeah.
I just talk openly, and we'll talk about our word problems and say, well, what was his strategy? And then they just learn what the word strategy is.
It was pretty exciting that people volunteered, and now we can show them the power of word problems, because really, that could be most of your instruction. And knowing that kids come with so much more than we think they do, they don't need instruction to solve problems.
When you know when you get kids from the grade below, that the more that they come in knowing, the farther that you can take them. That coherence helps, and I can get to bigger numbers than I would have been able to get to now that these kiddos have some exposure, that they come in sometimes already grouping in bigger groups and not counting by one.
They're like doing math and making my brain stronger.
I can be like a YouTuber for math and reading and like teach little kids so they can like get some math in their brains, so I can get even smarter.
Last time I counted by tens and I did it, and I counted to 20.
Students loving math is because of this. Students didn't love math before. Word problems were like, ugh, all the time. And now just throwing those in on the regular, it's made a huge difference. It's amazing what they have and what they can do when you're having four different strategies going on. Let's look at this one. How did you think this student solved it? Their math vocabulary, their justification skills, so much better.
Education oftentimes finds itself where it comes and goes, and its initiatives, its practices, pendulum swing is often said from one side to the other. We need to provide a system for our students to work within and learn within that's going to really sustain over time. And so this work with Cal Ed Partners, our P3CC team, has really created something here in our district that I feel very confident is going to stand the test of time.
Aren't our kids cute? And our teachers are amazing. So I just want to make sure you got to see as well what people throughout California...
Everything is perfectly organized. I'll start working on my...
This presentation brought to you by...
Right. I'm not sure what we've got. Okay, Kayla's got it. Thank you, Kayla. We are really excited about what's happening, and it is just begun, as it was said. And so thank you, Dr. Boatwright, for getting the team together to do this work and for Greg Chaparian's leadership on it. We have a whole host of schools that are involved in it, and I think a lot of the accolades that we're starting to hear from mathematics are coming from this type of work. There are a few resolutions. If I can switch gears for just a minute, there's a few resolutions on the board agenda this evening. One of them is a computer science education week on the consent agenda, and I just wanted to share with you, we have launched an AI-guiding Coalition just to investigate policy issues and bring those towards you. We have a team of individuals within the district that cross sectors to help in that work, and our IT Director, Chris Martinez, and our Instructional Coach for Technology are leading that on, and so we'll be bringing information back to you from their guidance. And then on December 2nd is National Special Education Day, which is a great opportunity to thank our team of educators, both general and sped, that serve over 2,000 students. And before I finish, I'd like to introduce you two. I know the meeting already started, but Jonathan Burrows is our new Public Relations Communications Officer, and we're so glad to have you onboard, Jonathan, and happy birthday, Anita.
Trustee Kefan?
Thank you, President Singh. Didn't get a chance earlier, but thank you, Director English and Dr. Lopez, for the land acknowledgement. As a member of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, want to wish our indigenous students and community members a happy Native American Heritage Month. And then we also had a couple other holidays that passed, so I hope all of our students, at this point, have gotten the sugar rush from Halloween out of their system. And happy Veterans Day, and thank you to the veterans who have served our nation and our community, including our own Mr. Sabantes. And then finally, thank you to the community for voting to pass Measure X, which will allow us to provide excellent schools that our students deserve.
Trustee Solis?
Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all the staff at Rio. November 1st, I went out there, was invited to attend the Special Olympics program out there. We were represented by a lot of schools within Fresno County. The kids enjoyed themselves. The weather was great, and it was just a great event. Thank you.
I also just wanted to just acknowledge, I had a student call me yesterday who was going through a really tough situation, and their high school, school psychologist was just a blessing for them and a blessing for our district in terms of how they guided them. So I also saw National School Psychologist Weeks. I just wanted to appreciate all of our school psychologists and really appreciate that student reaching out and sharing a very touching story. With that, we are going to move from comments from the public. I just want to reiterate, I had shared at the beginning of the meeting, for the comments from the public, each person gets three minutes. You will not be able to defer your time, so that means three minutes per individual speaking. And with that, we open up for comments from the public.
Thank you, President Singh. Our first comment is from Savpreet Atwal, and then after them will be Manpreet Sakon.
All righty. So, good evening to the members of the board. My name is Savpreet Atwal. I'm a second-year CAD intern, and I'm also a senior at Justin Garza High School. And CAD is our health and wellness internship. This year, we're both at Justin Garza and Central East High School. We focus on harm reduction and student bodies to be aware of the dangers of fentanyl, how to use naloxone, when to use it, and overall situation awareness. We like to create a positive environment for students to flourish on campus, and we like to make sure that our student body is aware of what is going on around them. Our internship was created for numerous opportunities to allow interns to show demonstrations of Narcan to our community, host town halls to discuss safety, and we've also helped with needle drive exchanges in downtown Fresno with San Joaquin's medical team. We've also helped create sanitary packs for that, and we've also liked to thank our school board for having an overdose emergency box in every classroom with naloxone in it. As well as that, each intern has had the opportunity to create a bond with a student who is struggling, and all of us have had numerous opportunities where we've helped our school and specific students with issues that they are facing, especially with substance abuse. This year, our team is split at both Garza and Central East, and we work together to bring our campus in terms of awareness and safety, and our team is looking forward to this year with exciting goals and projects in mind. And as you can see, our team of this year will be of six students across both campuses. We all work well together, and our overall goal in mind is for harm reduction. Thank you for letting us to be a part of your meeting tonight, and we'll also be speaking about a school survey that we conducted earlier on, and I have physical copies of the presentation if you'd like them. Should I just pass them over?
Thank you. Our next comment is from Manpreet Sakon.
Good evening, board members. My name is Manpreet Sakon, and I am a senior at Central East High School. Compass, which is formerly known as Sweet 360, is a social-emotional learning program used across Central Unified in high schools and middle schools. To provide some insight, the program is designed to help students manage their emotions and create positive relationships within their schools and beyond. Each Wednesday, 30 minutes of homeroom are spent using Compass. However, this time could better be utilized. The program is intended for social learning, but the reality is that students spend this time sitting at computer screens, creating disconnect and solitary. While Compass is well-intentioned, it often lacks engagement and doesn't effectively address students' mental health concerns. The content is unengaging and not reflective of what students actually need. We recognized this problem and decided to initiate a Google Form survey to better understand how the majority of the student body feels about this program and what change is needed. The survey focused on gathering information to understand what students believe about the effectiveness of Compass and to assess whether it genuinely provides value. We collected feedback at both Central East and Justin Garza High School. We also wanted to understand from a student perspective what solutions could instead be implemented to this problem. This includes understanding what this time could be redirected towards and what could improve education about the resources on campus available to students. This includes making sure resources are readily redirected to make sure every student feels they have the support in a way that feels meaningful and impactful. Students want support that's responsive to their actual experiences. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Gershon Mann.
Good evening, board members. My name is Gershon Mann, and I'm a senior at Justin Garza High School, and I'm also a first-year CAD intern. The data that we have collected from the surveys from Justin Garza and Central East shows that about 90% of the students are familiar with the purpose of Sweet 360, also known as Compass. The data shows that about 84% of the students from Garza and 80% of the students from Central East think that this is really not an effective way to learn about mental health and that it doesn't, or doesn't define, mental health as well. And it can't give us a definite, and most couldn't also give us a definite answer of whether it did give us, or did show, the purpose of mental health. Many students during this 30-minute time period, every single Wednesday morning, use this time period to be on their phone, catch up on work, and goof off until the actual class periods start. Many of the students on campus won't even open this app unless the teacher forces them to do it, which is only a few teachers on campus. I speak for myself and the student body when I say the students are not engaging or learning with the Compass. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Actionir Gil.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, school board members. My name is Actionir God, and I'm a senior at Justin Garza and a second-time intern. Gershon just shared the statistics of what the student body feels, and I will be sharing the comments that they've made. Many students share the lack of in-person interaction, especially for students who have had only one-time crises. Many students express frustration with the lack of timely help. One example of this was when a student commented, "Actually help a student when they ask for help rather than saying, 'You'll help,' and then do nothing." This goes to show how students want better interactive support and not just lessons online. We, as campuses, spend so much time trying to force students to do 30-minute lessons, but if we were to use those 30 minutes to let students talk to counselors, wouldn't that be more effective for the student body? We spend so much time behind a screen instead of talking to people in person, which is just promoting non-social interactions. We are losing our social skills and turning into robots. Instead of making us emotionless beings, please help us with learning and enhancing our interpersonal and intrapersonal skills. Throughout my years as a student, I've been a part of many effective social and emotional activities. A few that stuck out to me were talking in groups, if you're comfortable, of course, having in-person meetings with counselors and psychologists, and having interactive activities. A recent one that we did was positive affirmations, which is when we tabled and let people take sticky notes and write something positive and give it to someone else, which really uplifted the community, especially around our table and that day at lunch. And we want to promote more of that on our campuses, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Sukman Kar.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sukman Kar, and I'm a senior at Justin Garza. Along with the student surveys, we also conducted a teacher survey. We asked the following question: Do you believe that Compass is beneficial to a student's mental health? Which 43% of central teachers said it's not at all beneficial. 36% of Garza teachers also shared the same sentiment. We asked the central teachers, would it be beneficial for a wellness center on campus? Which 81 of the central teachers said yes, since they don't have a wellness center right now. When we asked central teachers, how do they envision the wellness center, one teacher said, "Only if it ran with fidelity." We don't have enough staff for disciplined tardies, counseling, special education, and EL students, let alone monitoring a wellness center. Our school psychologists and intervention specialists have enough to deal with. So my answer is a maybe to the wellness center, only with additional staff. We also asked Garza teachers, are there any safe spaces on campus for students? One teacher said, "I believe there are safe spaces where students can speak to a trusted staff member." With the student population being larger than the campus can handle, more space for students to go during break and lunch would be necessary to create, along with ample staff members for supervision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Samuel Ruiz Masias.
Good evening, trustees, President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and all of you guys who are present here today. My name is Samuel Ruiz Masias. I'm a senior at Central East High School, and I am a first-year CAD intern. It's so nice to finally see you guys in person. So I, like many others, have had to work through Sweet 360 and now know its compass. Look, I'm going to be real honest, I'm not going to stand up here and lie and say that I did every single lesson. After one month, I was tired of it, and instead I devoted the time to doing extra homework. If you guys don't know how Compass works, you have a pre-test where you kind of learn about a specific thing, then you have this long-winded presentation, almost like Google Sites with animations, and then you go back to the test, right? So as CAD, we had seen that our campuses, Garza and East, were affected by the same program and that it was not working. A whopping 40% of the students that we surveyed didn't believe that Compass is an effective tool. Another 40% could not give a definitive answer. According to Central Unified 2024 LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, and I read all 180 pages, it was not fun, around $9 million were spent on Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 of social-emotional learning. If even only 1% of that was spent on Compass, we couldn't find an exact number, as it doesn't say on the LCAP only the goals, then that would be $90,000 that was taken from hiring counselors, bettering schools' wellness centers, facilitating teachers to teach wellness, and helping students in a meaningful way. Trustees, even if we do count our school psychologists, our prodigy, our intervention counselors, and our intervention specialists, it does not make a difference. Not to toot my own horn, but I can safely say that I'm one of the most involved students on campus in regards to clubs, staff socialization, and school decisions, and even I barely learned about all the resources that we had on campus this year. If I was in the dark, imagine the other 1,795 students at Central East and the students at Justin Garza. Now, Central East is building its own wellness center, and Justin Garza has its own wellness center that is currently just cubicles in a sense. And it's something that could receive more funding instead of that of Compass. Trustees, there has to be a better way to teach students about their emotions, not a computer program teaching them about socialization. If we'd spent more time focusing on real, in-person communication, maybe things like trust vault exercises, group therapy, maybe group circles where people can share, and even activities like the sticky notes or different activities that can go along with wellness, then that would help a lot more than what Compass is doing right now, which is currently not much. Thank you. If you guys have any questions, feel free to talk to any of us.
Thank you for reading the LCAP. Our staff worked very hard to write that. Our next comment is from Allison Truckey.
Good evening. Okay, here's the issue. I was here a year ago and addressed the board about the baseball team at Justin Garza High School. My name's Allison Truckey. I'm the... I'm sorry, bear with me, I was in the hospital this week, but I made sure I was here because this is very important. Just give me a second, please. Our baseball team at Justin Garza School has experienced undue upheaval with the dismissal of our second baseball coach in two years. Our most recent coach, Chad Rothford, has been a guiding force for our young players, changing them not only about the game but about life. His dismissal without justification continues a disturbing trend that disrupts our team's stability and performance. Merely two years back, we faced the same circumstance with Zach Colby was fired. Please help me to understand how two men, not one, two, in two years, both well-known in the Central Valley and beyond for their own careers with their stats and accomplishments in baseball and their coaching records, or business, or even podcasts, has been so successful, yet they both get fired from this school district. Once again, our young players are being denied the continuity, guidance, and leadership necessary for their growth and this team's... their growth and this team's success. Frequent changes can impact performance and players' morale negatively. Studies have shown that consistency in leadership has a direct correlation with team performance and success. Gooder, two thousand and one. Coach Rothford's influence on the team was instrumental, instrumental in achieving a remarkable improvement in our team's overall performance and morale. His dedication, sportsmanship, and leadership are virtues that cannot be replaced overnight. This pattern of instability sends a negative message to our young athletes and harms the integrity of our coaches, our coaching system. Therefore, we urge all of you to please reconsider your decision and reinstate Chad Rothford as the head baseball coach for the betterment of our team, future, and future athletes. It's time to restore stability, respect, and fairness to our sports program. An investigation needs to be done within the Human Resource Department of this school board, which heads, that heads the hiring and the firing. I have proof, proof, proving that you're, the latest head of Human Resources was trying to poach coaches from three other high schools before any investigation was conducted or during the so-called investigation against Chad Rothford. There is proof that Coach Rothford tried to get hired in numerous positions on campus and was told to stop contacting the head of Human Resources about it. Who else should a person contact but him? Both coaches were fired because of, of a staff member at Justin Garza.
Thank you, Ms. Truckee.
Can I please just finish two more sentences, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Who filed a complaint using the correct words to make it happen. I started a petition and seven hundred and sixty different people signed it. All verified signatures. I don't understand how seven hundred and sixty people can all get it wrong. With, it makes no sense, whatever. So um, we have had three principals in three years. R A D is on administrative leave. The trainer was fired. We have sports programs going on, practices, and games with no trainer. How do you sleep at night? I don't sleep well at night knowing that.
Thank you, Ms. Truckee.
I am, I am begging this board to do the right thing and stand with us and do not ignore this petition because together we make a difference and you can help us all stand for more. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Jackie Soria. I'm s- I'm sorry, my mistake. Uh, Chad Rothford and then Jackie Soria is up next after him. And then Mr. Rothford, you'll have three minutes.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you for the following, uh, for allowing me to speak in front of the board and that I'm here today to try to help you understand why I would like my position reinstated. From the time I got this job last December, I've worked extremely hard to pick this program up from where it was with the previous coach getting fired. And by doing so, I had to gain the trust of every player in this program and parent. I believe I was able to do so and also be able to compete at a high level last year with the limited amount of time I had to get the team ready for the season. We accomplished a lot of firsts for the baseball program and I'm extremely proud um, to be the head baseball coach at Justin Garza and also the opportunity that I was given to coach. From day one, I've done nothing but abide by the vision and mission statement of Central Unified School District. I probably, and probably exceeded a lot of people's expectations on what I could do as a head coach. The love I have for these players and this program probably cannot be understood unless you're a part of it or if you have been a head coach or even coached, for that matter, in the past. The time spent with these players is probably just as much, if not more, time than they spend with their own families. I'm not only a teacher of the game of baseball, but a teacher of life, seen as through baseball. It's a sport most like life, where it is a lot of failure and how you deal with it. Teaching is about failure and how to succeed after failure, to pick yourself up, to move on, and continue through the hard times is something that um, that they're all going to have to deal with in life, and that is something that I always preach. I always told them this is preparing for life and that was my job. I never looked at this like it's all about winning or losing. Most important was preparing these kids for what is coming next for them in their life, after high school, whatever that may be. Don't get me wrong, I do want to win. I love winning and love uh, and I love competing. But at the end of the day, it's not about wins and losses, it's about learning something that you can take with you for the rest of your life. I believe my coaches and I were able to accomplish that in the short time we all had together. I believe I have gained these players' trust and so they trust me. And they trust me with the program and how I run it. You know, we, we say it's about the kids and I think the most important thing is these kids and these parents weren't even asked about me and about the situation. They were just told it's in your best interest. Well, how do you really know what's in their best interests if you don't talk to them or their parents, for that matter? The decision to let me go was based off people's perceptions about me. But people really don't know me and those are the ones making a decision. Those are the people that, that didn't talk to me or have conversations or try to get to know me as the head coach are now making decisions based off something who is not even relevant to the baseball program. And one parent that might be relevant to the baseball program are using their power inappropriately in the district to get their own way, which is not what the collective group of parent and players want. I've been asking for my personal file since the day I was let go. I still have not received that personal file because I, I do feel that there isn't much in my personal file that even justifies me letting, getting let go from my position. I feel like there's a personal agenda against me or people that didn't like me because something happened to their family members or friends or people that just didn't like me for doing things the way I felt was best for the players and parents that are a part of this baseball program. I wanted to be the most transparent person and coach that I could be for the program. I wanted to, I wanted the parents to know every detail that was going on in the program.
Thank you, Mr. Rothford. No, sorry, Mr. Rothford. Thank you, Ms. Soria. You're, you will have three minutes.
I wasn't gonna talk, but I'm emotional because this affects my son. This is the second year in a row this has happened at the same time. You just let a coach go that has done amazing things for all of these boys. Coach Roth was doing that. One day, they go to practice and they're told he's fired. Through offense, he tells them. They don't even know from anybody on, at the school. Then you decide to tell us, "Well, we can't really discuss it, but yet it was in your best interest that he wasn't a coach." You don't know my kid's best interests. No one asked me. As a board, all eight of you, superintendent, you, do better. You guys are supposed to be for the kids. No one here is for the kids. Nobody. When you guys make the decision, second year in a row, the same time, no one thought, "Well, how's this gonna affect the boys?" Baseball is, yes, in the spring, but it's a year-round sport. They have to train, they have to practice, there's things they need to do, and they're just sitting. Sixth period, they're just sitting, playing volleyball. Why is a baseball player playing volleyball? There's no reason for that. So all I have to say is you guys, as a board, need to do better. Reconsider hiring him and at this point, anyone that you have in uh, as an option, they would, uh, they would not, uh, why would they stay here? In a, in a year, October, you guys are gonna fire them, so I, I mean, anyone with the two brain cells would not come here. You're not gonna get anyone like you got Roth or even Colby. No one with that background. So as a board, I appreciate everyone looking up except for you, K- Kenny, because you keep looking down, not paying attention, and you're the superintendent. You're the main one. Listening, speaking out, and hearing us out, but please do better. I have three other kids and I'm considering transferring them to a different district because I don't want to deal with this anymore. This is ridiculous. Do better.
Thank you, Ms. Soria. Uh, I'm not ca- I'm not sure this is, I think, uh, Kane Soria? All right then. Uh, our next comment is from Taran Urbaran. Thank you, sir. Uh, Urbaran. And you will have three minutes.
Hi, um, this is not like me. I don't speak up. I don't talk. A lot of you know me. I've been in this district over twenty-five years. I've been on many boards. I ran Central Cal Ripken Baseball. Um, like Jackie said, uh, this is, this, this is hard. Baseball is a lifestyle. It's not just a sport. We live it. It's our entire life and it will be my son, both my boys' entire life at some part. Um, I am disappointed, sad, discouraged, and I'm embarrassed in the decision-making of Central Unified. Coach Rothford is respected and well-liked by the majority of parents and players of the Garza baseball program and the community. The parents and players of Justin Garza baseball have repeatedly been told by Dr. Marilyn Lopez that Central Unified cares and is concerned about our children. The firing of Coach Rothford, one year after the firing of Coach Colby, has proven otherwise. The parents and players of Garza baseball have lost all faith in the decision-making of this district. The firing of Coach Rothford has left our boys discouraged, depressed, and with little hope for the future of Garza baseball. And like Jackie said, a lot of them are thinking about leaving. Central Unified has shown no regard for our children. The firing of Coach Rothford could have been handled with training or disciplinary action, but instead was once again, has once again disrupted a new growing program two months before the start of the season. According to Dr. Marilyn Lopez, Coach Rothford was under investigation since the summer. At no time did the district discuss Coach Rothford with the players, the coaches, or parents of Garza baseball. At no time did any of the individuals responsible for the firing of Coach Rothford attend a practice, a game, or a booster meeting to observe the team or the coach, and we were told who was on that, the firing committee. If Central Unified is truly concerned of the well-being of the children, why then would they have a coach that they are concerned about? Concerned of the well-being of our players, concerned so much that they fired him around the players, why would they have them around the players for three months after an investigation began? Please make that make sense. If they're so concerned about our kids and him being around our students, why was he with our students for three months? If he, it was such a problem. Why weren't the players talked to? Why weren't the coaches interviewed? Why weren't any parents talked to? They weren't. The firing of Coach Rothford was not thought out and was made in disregard of the children that the district is supposed to protect and care about. After the firing of two coaches in a year, it's going to be extremely difficult to find a qualified coach the boys deserve two months before the season begins. Board of trustees, please, please consider showing regard for our program and re-hire Coach Rothford.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Miguel Martinez. Mr. Martinez, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Board. I'm Miguel Martinez, a player of uh, Justin Garza Baseball and I'm here to talk about trying to get my head coach back. The day he was fired, we, we had a game that day. We were excited to go play Clovis East and we were planning on beating them and uh, we were called to sixth period and told to stay there and our coach had to tell us that he was fired through a black gate. We couldn't even talk to him, so. And then, uh, ahead for our season just was, we were excited. We were a good baseball team. We're looking up. A lot of juniors heavy, seniors heavy. We had a good varsity team. And we were planning to do good things that year. And now we can't, we have to find a new head coach, get comfortable with him, and then I don't even know. I, I can't speak because of, I don't know what's next for the program. Even if we find a coach, who's gonna wanna stay? They're just gonna get fired, you know? Um, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me and I hope you rethink your decision.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Brody Griffin. And Mr. Griffin, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Board. My name is Brody Griffin. I'm a infielder at Justin Garza High School. And I mean, I don't have any notes up here. I wasn't really planning on talking today, but we're here now, so. I'd like to start off by saying, our coach, we were told he was fired for our well-being. If you ask any player on this team, none of us were spoken to, none of us were even informed about this, and we were all pretty well with him. We love him. Ask anyone. We all love him. And a second thing, I'd like to, Ms. Truckee back there, she, seven hundred and sixty signatures. I mean, I'm not sure if we can count, but I think seven hundred and sixty is a lot more people that like him than don't like him. So that's another fact. And then, yeah, I mean, it's hard, like Mikey said, it's hard talking up here. It's nerve-wracking, but that's really what we gotta do. I mean, we got school tomorrow, we got homework, we could have, we could be doing other things, but no, our coach is fired, so. We're fighting for him back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Eric Aradondo. And you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, uh, good evening. Uh, it was very shocking to hear that our coach got fired because like, I'm a sophomore and last year, I started the year off on JV. And then I got brought up to varsity and Coach Roth, he like, I feel like he always believed in me and like he took me underneath his wing. And he trusted me. And he fought for me to be on the team like I was young. I was uh, the youngest kid on the team. So I kinda had like something to prove. And he always took me underneath his wing and proved, and like, trusted me every single day and believed in me that I would do my best for the team and I just want to thank him and I don't think him being fired was the right decision. So if you can please rethink it, thank you. And that's it.
Our next comment is from Laura Bolton.
Okay, thank you. I just um, wanted to share with you, um, I, I looked up the results um, of the vote today for the Social Security Fairness Act and it passed resoundingly, three hundred and twenty-seven to seventy-five. So it goes on to the House for uh, the next round of votes, so uh, just want to share that good news. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the robust comments, uh, public comments section. A special shout-out to the students, both at CARE and Justin Garza. Do you have a comment card, sir? My number one was Savpreet Akwal. What's your name, sir? David Griffin. Okay, sir, why don't you come up? We'll give you three minutes.
Um, hi, my name is David Griffin. I'm a third-year assistant coach here at Justin Garza, which means I was a part of both head coaches that got fired. Um, not once, to this day, has anybody from administration, admini- uh, athletic directors, board, talked to me about the coaches or the baseball program or if there's anything nefarious going on or if the coaches were bad people. Not once, not once have they talked to our kids. Um, so now, two years in a row, our coaches get fired for nothing related to baseball and the baseball program. So that leads me to believe that they got fired because somebody had hurt feelings and somebody with those hurt feelings has ties to the board or has a family member that works in the district and they have the ear of somebody on the board. My wife, last year, was sitting in the stands at a JV game, unknown to some of the parents, that she was my wife, overheard Mrs. Sellers and Jo- uh, Derek Lopez's girlfriend bad-mouthing the program and bad-mouthing Coach Rothford and bad-mouthing the JV coach, Stefan Booty at the time. Derek Lopez was up for the job last year and didn't get it. So I'm assuming he just, he, he was out to get Rothford or didn't like him from the start. And now I've heard today that he is one of the coaches up in the running for this head coaching job, which to me screams nepotism. Rothford as a person was a great person to these kids. He, he surrounded the kids with twenty years of higher baseball experience with his coaching staff. That means twenty-plus years above high school level. The coaching staff around these kids to teach them the game and teach them about life and what's on after ba- what's on after high school, their, their experience after high school, what it might be. As a person, um, he had a player last year that was ineligible to play. He worked with him to get his grades up. He worked with the teachers. Even though this guy wasn't a starter, he still stuck with him to get his grades up. That way he was eligible to play in the senior game a- and was able to graduate with his, with his friends last year. That's the type of person Rothford is. Not only that, he's concerned about the kids' safety. We had a game last year that we ended up forfeiting to Edison because he was worried that the kids might get into something with the other team because the parents got our game canceled um, with the umpires because of how rowdy they were. Also, the parents had made comments about uh, threatening parents of, of our, of our teammates, so he didn't want anything to happen to the parents either, so he's concerned about the safety. As well as he would put himself in harm's way when that fight happened with Garza and Central. He went out on the field to make sure kids didn't fight each other because he was concerned about them. We had guys that played baseball on the football team. That's the type of person he is. He'll put himself in harm's way to keep, to, to, to keep kids from fighting because they would regret the decisions they make when it came down to that.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
I would just encourage you guys to reconsider your guys' decision to let him go and reinstate him. If you guys truly If you guys truly care about the kids and their well-being, you will give them this coach this year.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Because you do not have another qualified coach.
Mr. Griffin, your time is up now.
That is going to be able to come in and take this program over like-
And again, thank you to all of our students that are trying, public comment, speaking up, both at CARE and Justin Garza baseball team. President Singh, I have no other cards at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we then turn to the consent agenda. Oh, sorry, Mr. Burrows and, and Ole, do we have any phone calls at this time?
Oh, we have no callers at this time.
Thank, thank you. Then with that, we turn to our consent agenda. Do, do I have any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, we have a motion, a second by Trustee Kerfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We move on to tonight's action items. Our first item is the student discipline cases. Do I have a motion on the item?
President Singh, I'd like to motion to approve with the amendment that case 25002 be amended to, the location be changed to Pathway Day School.
Superintendent Davis?
We have a motion on the floor. We would need to proceed procedurally with the, if there's a second or the motion dies.
Well, the only reason is, there may be clarification whether, whether that's permissible or not, but that's what Superintendent Davis was sharing, whether that particular amendment is.
Superintendent Davis, I was informed that we do have permission for that.
Okay, and, and I've asked, okay, I'm getting a head nod. I, I wasn't in the, the hearing tonight, so I'm looking at our, our supervisor, and she says yes.
So we, we have a, a, a first, a first motion with a, with an amendment on case 2425002. We have a motion by Trustee Kerfan, we have a, second by Trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining, motion, motion does, does not carry two five. Do we have a-
Motion to approve the student discipline cases as presented.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis.
Second.
We have a second by, I think I heard Trustee Cervantes's name first.
President Singh, point of clarification, is this a motion for all cases?
Yes.
Come.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining, motion carries six one zero. Thank you. We move on to item number two, accept gifts to district assistant superintendent.
Good evening. Central High School received a donation of $1,000 from Charity Aid Foundation America for FFA program. Administration is recommending the board accept gifts to the district.
I move to accept the gifts.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Creo, a second by Trustee Kerfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. Next, we move on to item number three, approve superintendent employment agreement, and to which I'm going to read a, a statement, so people understand what, what we're actually approving this evening, on this item. So the governing board is being presented with a third addendum to the superintendent employee agreement. Based on a positive evaluation, the third addendum extends the term of the employment agreement for an additional year, which is set up to June 30th, 2028. The board and superintendent are still negotiating regarding salary and the evaluation process. It is anticipated that a fourth addendum will be brought back to the board on these additional two items during the regular meeting in December. Is that clear with everyone what, what this particular item is?
So to clarify, this is approving the addendum which extends the contract by one year based on a positive evaluation.
Correct.
No further changes to the contract.
Correct.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Creo, we have a second by Trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We next move to item number four, approve reclassification or revised job description. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lopez.
If I can actually start really quick, we're, we're both going to take this item. I just want to provide a little bit of context for this item. As you know, you'll see attached to it, there is a revision to the Director of Student Services job description. This work has been done, we believe, by Maisie Young since 2021, and the job has increased in, in such a way that we believe this is a really important next step as we begin some, some projects this winter. If you may recall, in June of 2021, the Director of Student Services position was vacated due to a retirement. It was determined at that time that this position could be fulfilled by a supervisor in that position. She's done an outstanding job in her work, but as you can see in the, the job description, there are quite a bit of assignments that are attached to the work that she does, and, we are very interested in this recommendation, this action this evening. Dr. Lopez, I think, is going to speak to some of the specific things that are, are in front of us, and why this is so important to her work.
Good evening. So attached for review is the reclassification and revised job description, and I want you to look at the second page with the redlining. So as you can see, there's an increase on, of duties that were provided to our current supervisor over student and family services. Some of the major components are in the bullet that says assist with school and class loading and implementation of AB 1114. So what that entails is basically all the movement dealing with students enrolled at school sites, which will de-increase significantly with the boundary changes. We have close to a thousand or so students that will be moved due to the boundaries that are taking place in the 25, 26 academic year. Besides that, the opening of the year, we have started something new this last, this year, actually, during the summer. It's called centralized registration, and they did a phenomenal job at the Student Services Department, and enrolling students ahead of time. So when the opening of the year comes, we have true enrollment of students starting the year, but all of that i- is not as, is, doesn't, it sounds easy, but it's not as easy, right? So we have to ensure that vaccinations are taking place for students to enroll, ensuring that the students have a place to go and ask questions before enrolling, ensuring that their packets are completed, and they have access to what they need to enroll their, their students. And opening the year, looking at those numbers, having true account of, accounting of those numbers, and ensuring that they, that they're placed at the right sites, and that we level the classrooms appropriately. All of that work is done by our current supervisor with her team. The duties go on. Another component that has increased her duties significantly, as you may know, we have close to 180 additional students that are experiencing homelessness or foster care. She is our current liaison. With that comes additional grants that we've accumulated this year. The city of Fresno, we were gracious enough to receive that, but as we've all gone through the training, we've realized the amount of work that that's going to require. Again, we are happy to do it because we know it's going to provide the right services to our kids and families, and ensuring that they have a place to sleep, but that requires a lot of clerical duties that are assigned to that department, as well as trainings. Again, this position will be funded through general fund. The additional funding is $13,000 that we're seeking, 268, to ensure that this happens, and administration is recommending that the board approve the reclassification of the job description for this employee.
Question, Trustee Creo?
What position did we have previously? So there were, there were some changes that occurred four years ago? Maybe three? And so how is this, what's the overall change and impact? Are we returning this position and completely eliminating the supervisor student services position?
So when we think of ensuring that we have coherence in our system, and this is for us to talk further in the springtime, when we look at staffing, but when we think of coherence and ensuring that we have the right person with the right training to do the job, if we eliminate positions like the supervisor positions, especially for departments this large that cover a lot of smaller departments within our district, then we're left behind with no one to fill the spot if somebody were to leave. So then we go from directors all the way down to intervention specialists. So they don't have the training, they don't have the knowledge, they don't do the work that our supervisors and directors do. So ideally, we are obviously looking at reinstating the prior position that was eliminated at that time, with the understanding that in the spring, perhaps, let's look at, how do we build coherence within our system, so we are not left behind with no one to fill a position when these critical roles leave?
Okay, so I think I'm, I'm still a little confused. So we're reclassifying the position. Are we eliminating currently with this, with the board action today? Are we eliminating, if this gets approved, the supervisor student support services position?
I would want to keep both. I feel like building coherence in our system is essential, especially with critical roles such, such as this one.
Okay, so then my next question would be, since we're changing the job description for the position, and I have a couple of questions regarding substantive questions about the, the revisions to the, the position, how are we going to reallocate some of the duties? How are we dividing those duties between the supervisor student support services and now the director? Because now it sounds like there's going to be overlap.
So when I think of a director position, they are the individuals that are actually creating the plans, and are, they're actually collaborating with our departments to create systems, collaborating with myself to ensure that the appropriate supports are provided throughout our system. When I think of the supervisor role, they are in support of the director and whatever systems are created. What that does in our system, when we create a director and a supervisor position, now we have somebody that is side-by-side learning, supporting the director, and now if anything were to happen, retirements, people leave our district, God forbid, we don't want that to happen with, with this role, but then we have somebody else that has worked side-by-side with the director to fulfill that role.
Well, and that's what happened last time. That's why we had a change. So I guess I'm trying to understand structurally if we make this decision now, or whether this should be tabled, so we have a better understanding as to the structure and the proposed overall impact. I'm, I'm not opposed to reclassifying this position, I just want a clear understanding as to what's the plan moving forward to ensure ultimately the service to our students. I, I know the work that is, that is being done by currently the incumbent, Ms. Maisie Young, but, and I also know the need for, to provide support to our teachers, our staff, some of our other student liaisons, some of our other folks who support students, and the fact that our district has the largest percentage of unhoused students and students experiencing housing insecurities. So I, I just want to understand structurally how this is going to be different, because I don't want us to be here, well, I don't want future board members to be here four years from now, having to have this discussion again, and us not thinking through the process, because the position before was eliminated because that person retired, so we, we consolidated. I just want to make sure we have stability moving forward.
And, and I think that's why we're here, so I'll speak to the history part of it. I, I can't, I went through the minutes, I, I don't understand, I was here at that time, how the amount of work would have changed significantly enough to, to completely remove the position. We need the position, we need the oversight, and we need redundancy in that department. In all of the work that we're doing, that question continues to come up, how can one person do all of this work? And, and I think for the amount of expectation we have for our families, I, I do believe that we, we need to continue to have multiple layers. I think we have the leadership and the philosophy moving forward right now in that area to really have improved. We've seen data in every student report in terms of how we're serving restorative justice and consequences when they need to apply. I want to continue that work. What I want to look at is the structures of other individuals within. We have a, a safety supervisor, we have a couple of intervention specialists, and one vacant, vacant intervention specialist. So can we look to those different positions? While we acknowledge the work that needs to get started right now with our attendance boundaries and, and have that oversight, that's also been assumed from class size or class numbers and balancing of classrooms that we have to do, can we continue that leadership while we just make sure within, if there's any cost savings, we can acquire that cost savings, or we can group together like assignment positions into the space? So I don't see it getting smaller, but I also don't want to eliminate how a couple of other positions might be able to coordinate or be a part of that team.
Did you have anything else?
Okay, so I guess my concern, and I apologize, because I'm, so what I'm hearing is, we're adding an additional position, this is not a reclassification, so the financial impact for this position is an additional, I think the agenda says 13,000, however, we would still have whatever salary would apply to the supervisor. And it, it's, it's relevant to me to understand, because my next concern is the education and experience, removing the three years and increasing that to five years. And then, so that, that's one of my first concerns. The second concern with the language in the job description, and I understand this was already existing language, but I think that as we update our job descriptions, we should take an opportunity to be more intentional about the language that we're using, but the use of contact with dissatisfied or abusive individuals, I'm struggling with using abusive individuals. I think there's other language that's more friendly to describe. I understand what the intention is, just to be more reflective and, and welcoming. And ultimately, the three years to the five years, my concern is, do we have any data or what is our basis for saying that someone with five years of experience relating to school attendance, alternative educational programs, implementation of discipline, et cetera, is more qualified for the position than someone with five years?
The, it has emerged to the director job description from some of the work that has been updated since 2021, and the five years was what was on the other director position.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be five, it can be three.
Well, I mean, I would, I would rely on your guys' expertise to know that I just, the work that I do professionally, one of the things, I want to make sure that as we're updating these positions, that we're also not eliminating potential candidates in the future. We're talking about future, please do not take this as, as meaning that I want you to leave or anything like that, but just being more aware of how, how do we work with this job description moving forward? If we're going to keep the supervisor of student support services, that makes sense to me that then the director would, would have to have more experience. Whether that's actually true in practice, I don't know. Again, I'd rely on you all, but these are the kinds of things that we have to be aware of and intentional about when we want to make sure that we have a diverse pool, hiring pool. So those are my concerns, and I think, again, it goes hand in hand with what the plan is for the supervisor student support services position.
Trustee Kerfan?
Nope, and now it's back, thank you. The green light was on. So my understanding is that historically, we've had a director and a supervisor, and then we just brought it down to one, but the workload has increased for our supervisor of student services, student support services, and they do crucial work. I think a director position is needed, and I am always in favor of our staff getting paid for the work that they're doing, and being compensated appropriately. My question is, so we're not eliminating the position of supervisor, so when could we expect that position to be posted?
Our discussion would be following the reclassification, which is our recommendation, to, to act- which is our recommendation to act upon that, is to bring together other positions that we have within our two departments of educational services and student family services and look at how those services might tie in to what the work now looks like. Is there any way to merge current supervisor? Is there a need to keep the same one that's there plus another one? Plus the intervention specialist or remove one of the intervention specialists? Before we post it, we wanted to really dig in and do that. We plan to and have meetings to do that in the next weeks before Thanksgiving break. So in terms of the, I appreciate the understanding, the work that's coming for us and that does need to be done, I hear that in what you're saying. We are eager to move. Quite honestly, we're trying to think about, we typically come to you with adjustments to positions early spring. We're happy to bring it back in December.
So is there a concern of possible redundancy then in this department? Or others?
No. We've just been holding meetings with other districts who have gone through attendance boundaries and they're quite alarmed about, they're pleased at where we are, but alarmed at our capacity right now. And so we're trying to triage with resources, but make sure the point person is able to do and make the decisions on the work that needs to be done.
Okay, just to clarify, I am in support of reclassifying this to be a director position. But I do want and expect there to be a supervisor position still so we can go back to the staffing level we were years ago to meet the increased workload we have now. Thank you, no further questions.
Trustee Solis and then trustee Creo.
Just to add a little information to the discussion. The superintendent at the time that the director's position was left vacant due to somebody leaving the district, decided that he wanted to go with area administrators. And that is right when the time we brought on our area administrators. And at that time, some of the work was going to be taken on by the area administrator with the understanding the workload the supervisor had wasn't what it is now. Since then, the workload has increased, probably prompting this item to be brought to us for a reclassification. So that's just a little bit of the background that I throw that out to you. And also I would like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Khrifan.
Request for further discussion.
Seconded.
So I would, I don't, I want us to be aware and conscious of the financial impact. I understand trustee Khrifan, your response of making sure that we have the staff. I absolutely want to make sure as well. But this constant fluctuation is really frustrating for me as a trustee because it's hard, I don't know what work is being done. I rely on our administration to provide us that information. So I would ask, and if there's consensus from the board, that before the hiring or whatever decision ultimately is going to be recommended or wants to be had with the supervisor of student support services, that the board get a presentation of the structure and what the financial impact. Because I want to make sure the elimination, the reclassification is going to increase our budget, but essentially we still have a salary for that position that would impact our general fund. So it's not saving us anything now. It's going to increase our costs. And I'm aware we need the work. We need the folks to be able to support the needs of our students and our families. I just, I want to make sure that we're having those conversations at the board level.
So there's of course a request for a presentation on the financial impact and the structure. We had a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Khrifan. Those in approvals, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We move to item number five, approve children and youth behavioral health initiative grant. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lopez.
Hello again, and I don't think I have the. Okay. So I bring forward to you the children and youth behavioral health initiative grant that was provided to us by Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. This grant. Go ahead and move to the next one. Ensures that we provide services to our students regardless of health coverage. So if we have students right now currently with Medi-Cal, receiving Medi-Cal services, we're able to, it's a billing process that we go through All For Youth to provide health services and we are able to receive some of the funding in return. This grant specifically focuses and targets students that do not have Medi-Cal and we're able to bill for those services, therefore earning funding back to our sites in our district. Currently, this is just for us to be able to accept this grant. It's a total of 330,000 for the implementation grant. And we're able to ensure that we use this specific grant for the items listed on the presentation, which are workforce development, behavioral health ecosystem, the infrastructure, creating the infrastructure, development of best practices across our district, public awareness, as well as sustainability of the mental health model. I know that this is something we have already started discussions with Laura Bolton and our wish to initiate this through our intervention counselors. But as an attachment, I also included the fee schedule, which goes into detail as to the various different positions that are able to bill for services. And these are services that are, many of them are already providing to our students, but now we're able to bill for. For example, students going into the counselor's office and being able to get social emotional support when they're going through trauma. We do that already. And now we're able to bill for that service and be able to get some funding back to our district. Is there any questions? I welcome any questions.
Trustee Solis.
So the individual employees that are going to be doing this Medi-Cal billing, they're employees of the district or contracted employees?
So we are, we're in the works of creating a three-year plan because we really want to think about the impact that this funding can have in our district. We obviously don't want to create new positions with the three-year grant or two-year grant for implementation. But we're looking at current staffing. We are looking at how do we spend this funding to ensure, I actually attached also an implementation plan to this presentation. And it goes over training and supports for intervention counselors to ensure that we equip them with what they need to provide services to our students.
And then Superintendent Davis wanted to add some remarks.
My concern with staff billing Medi-Cal. Being familiar with mental health programs, it's very easy to lose track of the services that you want to provide to the individual client when part of the employee's personnel evaluation is going to be their Medi-Cal productivity. In other words, you start wrapping around what are you billing at? Not what are the services that you're giving? So I would strongly suggest the new board look at these positions and that no part of that person's eval has to do with productivity. And in other words, their eval can be perfect with one hour of billing or a thousand hours of billing. That I would really warn this district and this board to be real careful when you start talking about productivity because the focus switches very easily, like turning on a light switch, from the services being provided to the productivity of the person, how much they're billing.
Superintendent Davis wanted to just make a remark about this.
I want to clarify one thing because a few people had asked me about what could be billed. And it's Medi-Cal and also private insurance. And so I had answered a question to a few people and I don't remember who, that it wasn't private. It was only Medi-Cal. And if I can add to the point you just made, we currently have any student who has an IEP and services through an IEP, we have a system for recouping costs. And the valuation is not attached to productivity, it's attached to the standards of their job. And so we would expect that that would continue.
Trustee Sellers.
Thank you. Who currently does the billing that we already do?
Our psychologists are part of the special education piece. We also have All For Youth. They're currently social emotional support providers that do that as well.
So it's a combination of staff members and third party?
Yeah, depending on the grant that you're discussing. So one of them is through special education. So we recruit funds for special education services.
Okay, and I just want to clarify that, so I understand this correctly. This is simply to accept the grant? We don't have a proposal yet of how we're going to implement it yet?
The proposal is attached to the presentation. Slide number three. 60% of the funding, at least for the implementation grant, is coming to us. 40% is going to FCSS to support us with the building of the infrastructure. But it is attached to this presentation on the next slide.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can click it.
Trustee Servantes. We have a motion by trustee Servantes, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We move on to item number six, approve exemption from required expenditures for classroom teacher salaries for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Assistant Superintendent Ikbal.
The district is requesting a waiver to the CEA, which is the current expense of education. The district expenditure in classroom, including salaries, has been consistent for many years. However, the COVID-related expenditure modified the calculation. Administration is recommending the board approve the exemption.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Creo.
I'll shortly make a motion to approve. But I'd like if there's consensus from the board. Request that moving forward when we get the budget presentation, that we also have a component because I think this is a critical factor that we as trustees and who have a fiduciary duty to our constituents that we're aware of this calculation so that when we're making decisions, we're making informed decisions and without a move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Creo, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We move on to item number seven, approve replacement of DSA inspector for Shields and Brawley Elementary School, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board Trustees and Superintendent Davis. On June the 27th of 2023, the board approved DSA inspection services related to the Shields and Brawley Elementary School project to Mr. David Dahl. Mr. David Dahl was a Class One Inspector. Mr. Dahl died unexpectedly on October the 25th of this year. And in December of last year, we lost another inspector who had performed inspection services for our district who also unexpectedly died. There are less than nine Class One DSA inspectors that cover the Central Valley. Most have heavy workloads in Clovis, Fresno, Madera and the state center community college districts and some of our neighboring smaller school districts. In order to avoid delay with construction of Shields and Brawley, the district has received a proposal from Mr. Jim Dahl for DSA inspection services for the Shields and Brawley project that are required by the California Building Code. Jim Dahl is the son of David Dahl and has provided inspection services for Fresno and Madera Unified School Districts. Mr. Dahl lives in Clovis. Administration is recommending approval of this item. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Creo.
I didn't pull the previous contract. Is the fee remaining the same?
It's went up. It was, I believe, this particular one is $150 an hour. So the rates have gone up for Class One DSA inspectors. I believe Mr. Dahl was at 115.
Okay. And remind me, is this one that's by statute or is this their price? Okay.
No, it varies, but most of them are around the $150 range.
Okay, so do we know what the overall impact of the increase in this cost? That it'll have to the contract?
I, off the top, well, this will be a new contract. It will replace, Mr. Dahl's would just go away.
The overall project contract, sorry.
The overall project contract. So it will have an increase, but not as substantial enough to. It will increase because of the hourly rate.
Right. Do we have any other options?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not very many of them and I've reached out to a few of them. Actually, one DSA inspector lives here in our district and he's in Clovis. So yeah, this, yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee Khrifan.
Thank you, President Singh. So the contract would be $140 an hour or $150?
$150.
Okay, the attachment says $140 an hour.
Maybe he might have. Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, just want to clarify, make sure I'm getting the appropriate information.
I typically, they're $150, so okay.
So if it's, all right, if it saves us $10 an hour. What explains the price increase in the previous contract of 115?
It's governed, so it's a prevailing wage. So in the DIR, the Division of Industrial Relations, sets the threshold on those. And so they've gotten raises over the years. They just, they just haven't really, on our end, they've really given us a break lately. So just because of the relationships we have with them.
All right, motion to approve at 140 then.
True.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Khrifan, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We move on to our exhaustive information items list. Item number one, receive information regarding the 2025-2027 calendars for Central Unified School District. Director Cuellar.
Good evening, President Singh, Vice President Creo, members of the board and Superintendent Davis. Attached for review, I propose Central Unified School District calendars for the 2025-26 and 2026-27 school years. The calendars were created through collaboration with CUTA and CSCA and include instructional days for students, duty days for certificated employees, and a list of holidays that will be observed. Administration is recommending that the proposed calendar be placed on the December 10th, 2024 board agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Then with that, we'll place it under consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, receive information regarding the 2024-2025 first interim report. Assistant Superintendent Ikbal.
This is a placeholder for the first interim report.
Thank you. It'll return then under action under next board meeting. Item number three, receive information regarding teaching fellows' winter sessions contracts. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lopez.
Hello again. I am excited to say that we have opened the enrollment process for winter camps. This has been so exciting. If you have not seen the options that are going to be available, you'll see them soon. So having said that, we do have this contract here in front of you to support us with carrying out the winter camps in January. It is for $76,095 out of ELOP funding. And administration is recommending this item be placed on the December 10th agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Creo.
And this contract expands the services that we've been providing in the past, right?
Yes, this is an addition to, so this is an addition to the ELOP after-school program, MOU that we have. This provides additional, an expansion to the K through eighth literacy component for our district and winter camps. So it is very exciting and we want to ensure that our kiddos, little ones are going to be going to camp opportunities over the winter. So we want to make sure we have teaching fellows in the bus, riding with them, ensuring that they're safe. So yes, that expands that.
Awesome, thank you.
And Dr. Lopez, how many students do we have approximately the positions for, for the winter camp?
So we are welcoming all that register, but camp opportunities are limited, obviously. So they may be able to select an out-of-district camp. And we have about 700 spots right now through the agencies that we're working with. If we run out, then we also have some components of the camp as well at the school sites. We're still making it fun. We're very excited about that. But yes, they, if we run out of spots in the outside camps, we still continue with camps at the school sites that will be providing the services.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll have this returned as consent. Item number four. Item number four, thank you. Item number four, receive information regarding twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual and five-year development impact fee reports. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal?
All right, this is the developer fee report. It has two parts. The first part is the collection and expenditure of developer fee fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And the second part is a summary of last five-year revenue expense of the developer fee. Uh, the report has been created by the facility department, by our planning manager, who oversees the collection and expense of this fund. Administration is recommending the item be placed on December tenth, twenty twenty-four board agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa?
And this is a mandatory report that we have to receive and approve, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
We'll have this returned under action for, to receive the report at the next meeting. Oats.
Can this come after consent? I mean, unless anyone is requesting action?
No, that we can have it under consent. Number five, receive information regarding the renewal of the health and welfare reinsurance VOYA contract amendment. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal?
Okay, so one of the things I've been looking into is all the contracts related to the health and welfare insurance. As the contracts are coming to closer for renewal, it has been brought to the board for approval. And one of the contracts as needed approval is VOYA insurance. This is a gap insurance referred to as stop-loss insurance. The way it works is the district self-funds up to two hundred and fifty thousand, and after that, the VOYA insurance pays the difference. The annual cost of this insurance is three point nine million. However, it saved the district seven point three million payment, worth of payment. The contract has been discussed at the Health and Benefit Committee. All the transactions happens through the self-insurance fund. So, uh, board, I'm asking board for approval of this contract.
Trustees Solis?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, this comes up every year. We look at it every single year. Um, it's very, very necessary, and, um, it's based on, um, the usage by the members that become seriously ill. So it's very, very important, very necessary, and we approve of it.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? We'll have it returned under consent as well. Item number six, receive information regarding the additional lockers for Glacier Point Middle School. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you again, uh, Board President. For your information, uh, tonight is, uh, the purchase and installation of additional lockers to meet Glacier Point Middle School's current needs due to enrollment this year. Uh, in your attachments is a proposal from Sierra School Equipment to furnish and install new three-tier lockers. That, uh, the three-tier locker system was the only option to increase capacity while maintaining, uh, current ADA accessibility inside, inside the girls' gym. Uh, to build concrete extensions on top, uh, onto the existing locker pedestals, uh, would, would impede on access and was not an option without costly remodeling inside the girls' gym. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the December tenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, board agenda for action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Correa?
So maybe I don't understand dimensions, but are we simply replacing the existing height of the lockers that are two per locker to replace them with three lockers?
You're correct.
Okay, so we shouldn't have any issues with whether, I, I understand the ADA compliance as far as the space and being able to move around, but as far as students being able to access the lockers?
So that they'll be able to access the lockers, yes.
And then you mentioned that this is to address the current needs. So are we looking five years out? Are we going to have another item before this, for the similar lockers?
Looking at the projections, most likely not, but you never know. And right now, they're, they're in need of, of, of capacity.
Okay. And then I understand that some of the larger lockers or the lockers that we're essentially replacing, um, typically allow students with like higher equipment or bigger bags, whatever the case may be. We will still have those larger lockers somewhere else within the space, right?
So you're going to have left over about three hundred and forty-six of those large lockers. That's, uh, and based on the, the coach that we, and the principal that we've been, uh, speaking with, that that is more than enough that they need. The tall ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming we've also looked at the five-year projection or whatever demographics we have to account, okay?
We did. It's just that, you know, um, it's, it's a, it's a small price to pay because we don't know what'll happen, uh, later on down the road, and we didn't.
Well, we're supposed to know, or at least have a standard deviation.
I, I, I wish I had that crystal ball that'll actually tell me, you know, uh, but we don't, and they need the space.
Okay.
If no other comments, then we'll have this returned under consent at the next board meeting. We move on to item number seven, receive information regarding deferred maintenance projects. Director Bott?
Uh, good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis and board members. Uh, as part of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five deferred maintenance plan that the board approved, uh, we have two projects that require additional board approval. Uh, the Central East High School roof repairs, um, will be repairing and replacing the existing roof at the three hundred building, eleven and twelve hundred building. Uh, these buildings will have the metal roof section replaced with any damage under the metal roof also repaired. Uh, this project will be owner-supplied material, and the labor will be bid out, similar to the roof and repair project that we did in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four under the deferred maintenance projects. Uh, the material will be purchased using, uh, the CMAS contract for twenty, or four dash twenty dash fifty-six dash zero zero six B. Um, and then also, we have the Rio Vista Tennis Court repairs, uh, which will repair the cracks and repaint the courts. Uh, this repair will be done under CMAS contract four dash twenty-four dash oh-two dash one zero, uh, one zero one three. The Central East, uh, roof repair material, uh, will be in an approximate of four hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents, and the Rio Vista Tennis Court repairs will cost two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars paid out of the deferred maintenance. Administration is recommending this item be placed at the December tenth, twenty twenty-four board agenda for action. After I answer any questions the board may have.
Trustees Solis?
Can you give us some background, uh, information on proposition two that was just passed?
Uh, the state passed about ten billion dollar. And out of ten billion, eight and a half is going to come to the school districts, and about one and a half is going to go to the community colleges. So this is basically a bond where the state has to borrow, and it does have impact, but I don't think it has an impact on our property, this property taxes around this place.
And as most state bonds go, it's probably going to be, if you're looking at the percentage of bonds that they pass, it's going to be a sixty, forty payout?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And our utilizations of those bond money would be separate from our school bond that the district just passed?
Yes.
And would the utilization of that state, uh, proposition affect the tax rolls of this, the community of Central?
No, it's going to have no, no taxpayer impact on it.
All right. Um, just thought I would bring that up. I do remember there were some questions about it a few meetings back. Uh, basically, it's extending our projects. So I'm assuming either this board or the next board is going to be looking at, uh, new deferred maintenance projects that can be completed for that. There was some discussion about bathrooms in multiple schools, that type of thing. And even though this board has set a priority for those maintenance, it will be up to the next board to finalize those or change them any way they want. But we'll be able to complete, depending on how much money you are awarded from the state, a lot more bathrooms or a lot more classrooms than we could have just with the school bond. That's it.
No other conversation, then we'll have, uh, this item, uh, number seven returned under consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, receive information regarding bid schedule and award for Justin Garza High School Visual and Performing Arts Project Bid Package number one. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you again, Board President. In order to begin, uh, Justin Garza High School Visual and Performing Arts, uh, building construction, this item is being presented to you tonight for information. Uh, if you would look at your bid schedule attachment, uh, for the first bid package that is currently being advertised, the work package is earthwork and shoring. Uh, the reason why that it's bidding for this particular package, it's a multi-prime, CM multi-prime delivery method, is that the shoring is a deferred submittal, submittal, meaning that, a given, a definition is that DSA has a process that requires the contractor to produce engineered shoring drawings for our building that is adequately detail, that is adequately detailed for the structural, uh, team at DSA to review and approve. Construction cannot start until these drawings are approved by DSA. Uh, this is a lead time of, of around three months for the, the, the DSA deferred approval process. Administration is recommending that, that this item return on the December tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, board, uh, to, for the award and the low, for the lowest apparent responsive bidder for this particular work package. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If no other comments or questions, we'll have this item returned under consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here with us for a while, Director Rodriguez.
Yes, very busy.
Uh, item number nine, receive information regarding change orders for Justin Garza High School Athletics Complex Increment number one. Project, Director Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you again, Board President. For your information tonight, our change orders and the attachment summary for each item for the multi-prime contractor packages on the Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex Project, Increment one for your review. The change orders are all deductive, uh, changes for work that was either removed, uh, well, was removed from the original contract scope and are necessary to close the project. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item to return, uh, for action on December tenth, uh, twenty twenty-four board agenda. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have for this item.
Trustee Correa?
So just for purposes of anyone that's still watching, what do you mean by deductive?
Well, it's a, it's a, uh, it's not a, it's a deduct of scope of work from, from the contract.
So it's a credit that we're receiving for work that was not done?
Mm-hmm, that was removed from the scope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other discussion, we'll have it returned under consent. Item number ten, receive information regarding intent to adopt proposed resolution twenty-four twenty-five dash twenty-two regarding dedication of easement to City of Fresno for development of West Gettysburg Avenue APN five twelve dash oh seventy dash fifty-six T portion. Director Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you again, Board President. Attached for your information is, is Board Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-two for the Gettysburg Offsite City of Fresno Improvements. The resolution contains a public easement that is necessary to be dedicated as part of the development of the property, uh, at forty-two hundred North Grantland. This area is specific to the Gettysburg where we had just, uh, uh, are in construction with our soccer complex there. Uh, the improve, improvements in that area include sidewalks, uh, minor roadwork, uh, relocation of barriers and some street lighting. Uh, these eight, these easements are required by local ordinance for the City of Fresno, and the city unfortunately will not approve any, any type of drive approach, sidewalks, street lighting, connection of storm water, sewer, despite the associated fees being paid without a street easement. Administration is recommending that this item return to the board and be placed on the, uh, uh, December tenth, twenty twenty-four board agenda for public hearing and action on this item.
Trustees Solis?
Just out of curiosity, on our side of the street for the soccer field, we're responsible for all the drainage and everything, and then on the other side of the street, it would be the developer's cost?
On the others, on the other side, are you, uh, thinking Grantland Avenue? So Grantland, there is an easement, but currently, right now, the city's not asking us to do anything yet, and that isn't in design yet until we start the footsaw project there. The increment three?
So where's the runoff going to go? The, in, in, in between there?
In between?
That, the?
Gettysburg?
No. Between the time that we put in whatever we're going to put in and the time that the developer puts in whatever they're going to put in, where's the, where's the runoff going?
So when we fill in the basin, and I think this is where, where you're going, so when we fill in that basin for increment three, the runoff is going to go across the developer's ponding basin. Actually, it's not really the developer, it's the, um, Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control, which I'm in constant contact with him, and that's where our runoff will go to that basin, uh, in that development.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
We'll have this returned under action along with our public hearing. Thank you. We move on to item number eleven, receive information regarding change orders for Shields and Brawley Elementary School Project Bid Package SBO three. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you again, Board President, Board Trustees and Superintendent Davis. For your information, uh, tonight is a change order for the multi-prime package, uh, we call it SB three, which is the roofing portion, and the attachments itemized summary for the Shields and Brawley Elementary School project for your review. The increase to the project is due to the impacts implemented after this project was originally bid. So some history on the, on this change order is that the design height at the equipment curbs, now, these equipment curbs are what our HVAC units are sitting on top of on the roof. So the curbs would not meet the warranty requirements by the roof, uh, materials manufactured that was listed in our specifications. So essentially, uh, in a nutshell, there was just no coordination between the design and the material manufacturer that the design team specified in the actual specifications. So, uh, the reef, the roof curbs needed to be raised in order to receive our thirty-year warranty. There was a few options that we could have done. We, we picked the, the most, the, the most economical, uh, the most, uh, the best at the time, the, well, actually, we had two options. We had one where we can, uh, to replace the curbs to make them higher, but that lead time was twelve weeks. And, uh, and so this particular method here, I think there's a drawing that was attached to this, uh, your board agenda. Uh, this one here was the, was, uh, the, the fix to fix that roof curb. Trying to, I had some other things to say, but, uh, I, yeah, but anyway, in a nutshell, this was the best for, for, for the district, uh, for us to raise the curbs, the equipment curbs, without removing the actual equipment and replacing with, uh, higher curbs. So, um, I've, we reviewed this thoroughly. Uh, staff, uh, recommends that this item return to the board on December tenth, twenty twenty-four board agenda for action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, this board may have.
Without any other questions, we'll have it returned under consent. Item number twelve, receive information on change order number one, Shields and Brawley Elementary School Offsite Street Work Project. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you again, Board President. Tonight, you're receiving information regarding a deductive change order for off-site road improvements, specifically the left-hand turnpocket, uh, that the city required us as part of the district's development of Shields and Brawley, uh, Elementary School. If the board recalls, the city, uh, the city's basis for the left-hand turnpocket was to mitigate traffic concerns, uh, along Brawley Avenue uh, with a left-hand turnpocket onto Fountain Way. Administration has reviewed the change order and is recommending, uh, that this item be placed on the, uh, December tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, board agenda for, for action. And I'll stand by to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Trustees Solis?
You're going to have problems with it. I went out there. It's not long enough. During peak, peak hours, when parents are going to be dropping off and dropping on with the understanding that, if you remember the history of the planning of that school, it was supposed to be a walk to school. So what you're going to have during peak hours is you're going to have traffic backing up all the way to the intersection because that turn lane is nowhere long enough. But you did what the city required you to do, so thank you.
Yes, and we brought those concerns, uh, up. Yes, and we brought those concerns up to them because we saw the same thing. But it's there, it's there, there, right away, so.
Well, yeah, if no other questions, we'll have it return under consent. Item number 13, receive information regarding revised Board Policies, Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. You will see a list of Board Policies that are coming forward. Before we do a quick review of them, we'll be as brief as possible due to the hour. There are no, none of these policies had options that we had to select from, and none of them have District Suggested Language. So all of the language and adjustments that are in it come from the CSBA recommendations. We'll start off with Dr. Lopez.
Hello. So I'll start with Board Policy 0450, Comprehensive Safety Plans. Policy updated to reference new law SB 323, which authorizes a school employee, a student's parent guardian or educational rights holder, or a student at specified times to bring concerns about an individualized student ability to access disaster safety procedures, described in the comprehensive safety plan to the principal, and if there is merit to the concern, requires the principal to make appropriate modifications. Requires comprehensive safety plans as well to include adaptations for students with disabilities in accordance with the Federal Individual Rights and with Disabilities Education Act and Section 504 of the Federal Rehabilitation Act 1973. Additionally, the policy is updated to clarify that portions of the comprehensive safety plan that include tactical response to criminal incidents are not required to, but may be publicly disclosed. Next Board Policy is 6159.1, Procedural Safeguards and Complaints for Special Education. The policy is updated to encourage early and formal resolution of any dispute regarding special education services. It also reflects a new state regulation, number 21, which establishes a complaint process separate from UCP for complaints alleging noncompliance with federal or state law related to the provision of FAP for students with disabilities. And Board Policy 6164.41, Children with Disabilities Enrolled by Their Parents in Private Schools. The policy is updated to just reorganize and clarify material, but no changes were made to the policy.
So mine is Board Policy 3110. It kind of states that the Board adopts a resolution providing for transfer from designated fund balance to any expenditure classification or between classification. Thank you.
Okay, so I have Board Policy 6141, Curriculum Development and Evaluation. Instructional materials are an important component of the curriculum, and the process of adopting instructional materials is coordinated with the curriculum review and adoption process. When presenting a recommended curriculum for adoption, the superintendent or designee provides research data or other evidence demonstrating the proven effectiveness of that proposed curriculum. I also have Board Policy 6146.2. This is the Certificate of Proficiency for High School Equivalency. We want every student in Central Unified to earn their high school diploma through successful completion of district graduation requirements. Sometimes, though, a student requires another path. The California High School Proficiency Examination is available for students. The Board Policy has been updated to reflect that there is a fee for this test, which is waived for foster or homeless students. I have Board Policy 6162.8. This is research. Districts may not require a student to submit to a survey requesting personal student information without prior written consent by the student's parent or guardian. This prohibition applies to surveys and research conducted by third parties. So this Board Policy just updated that language. Board Policy 6176, this is weekend Saturday classes. This has been updated to reflect AB 2659, which authorizes makeup classes for any type of absence, including excused absences to be offered during the weekend. Policy also adds material regarding the circumstances under which teachers cannot be assigned to work on a weekend. And then lastly, I have Board Policy 6200, this is adult education. This adult education policy has been updated to reflect AB 486, which repeals the authorization for districts in sparsely populated areas to participate in the adult education program administered by the County Office of Education. In Central Unified, we do have our own adult education program that services our, our community and our students. This Board Policy also provides that a district may, with the approval of the County of Superintendent of Schools and the Superintendent of Public Instruction, contract with another district to provide adult education instruction if the district has an adult school or classes, but is unable to maintain that school or classes because of an inability to secure a teacher or because of a lack of facilities. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the December 10th Board Agenda for Action, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll have this return under action to, to give time for adequate review.
Thank you.
Thank you. We turn to item number 14, receive information regarding nomination of trustee for CSBA Delegate Assembly, Superintendent Davis.
This is to alert you that two-year terms for delegate assembly are coming up. The cover sheet shows to you, should you be interested, the dates will be May 17, 18, and December 1 and 2, if you choose to get involved in the delegate assembly. Trustee Krefon is currently in a delegate term expiring in March 2025. There will be four individuals whose terms will be expiring, and so do recommend this return to the December 17th organizational meeting to determine if there's anyone who would like to be nominated by this Board and, and fill out the application.
Tom.
Well, we'll have this returned then, obviously, on December 17th. Thank you. Item number 15, receive information regarding formation of Board Subcommittee. So we return this item, I believe this is the third time we've had this as our informational item. Attached, you have some documents in terms of some parts of previous, previous conversation. I'm hoping we land at a place to actually carry the conversation further to actually vote on it at potentially our next meeting, if, if that's, that's where we end up. Trustee Solis.
Depending on the number of committees and from what I've heard from the Board, it's going to be more than one or two, I think we really need to evaluate for these committees and you, I, I, it can be, the position can be defined in different ways, but basically, they're going to need clerical support. We can't expect Anita to do what she's doing now, plus this extra work on top of that. So whether you make it clerical support assigned to the superintendent's office, and she can assign the work as needed, including these committees, or you want to put it somewhere else, it's to the consensus of the Board, but along with these positions, if you're going to, along, as well as these committees, you're going to have to designate some clerical support for it somehow. That will be up to you guys when you decide how many committees you're going to have.
Yeah, point, point well taken. I guess I'll, I'll kind of bring, bring it back to what I had sort of initially proposed last time for, for amendment, for, for conversation. I, I think I, having studied and really appreciative of the administration doing the research on a number of different surrounding school districts and even some of the school districts in our, in our greater sort of Central Valley area and even taking us to the coast, hearing some of the conversation, I tried to bring some of these together. I know we talked about potentially student achievement, life, meaning student life and wellness as a potential committee. We had potentially talked about, and of course, each of these committees would have no more than three Board members and, and no less than one. Potentially, another one we've talked about was one looking, examining and doing deep dives into, for instance, some of the Board Policies, just like the ones that came, came tonight, where they would get more time to sort of study and make recommendations to the, to the entire Board, but something around Board Policies, bylaws, priorities, and potentially even community engagement in that. We've talked about a third one maybe around finance, budget, and facilities. I know trustee Sellers talked about potentially that one having safety. I know Superintendent Davis maybe talked about that one with a student one, but I know you had shared that you wanted to take a more systems, potentially, we had discussed like a systems-like approach. And then another one around a joint Board Subcommittee with other jurisdictions and other, other government entities that also, government and other public entities around our district. These were at least the ones I, I recall from our conversation, but yeah, happy to continue the discussion. Trustee Krefon.
Okay, so thank you, Board President Singh. Can you remind me what joint Subcommittee with other jurisdictions and agencies is?
Potentially, having, so this one was really inspired in some ways from Clovis Unified, so they actually have frequency once or twice a year where they actually meet with the City of Clovis, the City of Fresno, County of Fresno, and, and discuss other things sort of relevant to, or, or things relevant to sort of the, the joint bodies.
Okay, so I will take a stab at driving conversation forward and put forth seven, just see what we feel about that. The seven being athletics, agriculture, art, and wellness, just trying to configure how to make those two their own entity, Board Policies, bylaws, Board Engagement, facilities, and safety, because I think our infrastructure and the safety of our students mesh well together, finance and budget, and then that joint Subcommittee with other agencies. The reason I don't have student achievement on that seven is because I don't think that should not be a priority for any Board member. So in the interest of trying to move this conversation forward, I'm going to put out seven and then interested to see how, what other people think. If we think one of those is not needed, if we think we need another one, just moving it forward.
I, I think my general feeling, and I, and I appreciate the, the inspiration are really clearly around the pillars of, of our district. I think, especially as we roll out, I think I tend to be a little bit on the lower side. I think, at least in terms of the districts that have, that our administration at least provided us some background information, seven would definitely put us at the, at the top of the top. So I, I guess, there's no magical number, but I think three, four seems to be a more sweet spot because remember, we would have to serve on these, and that's, you know, and, and these would actually be during the workday oftentimes, or at the discretion of the, of the committee. But I know in other school districts, oftentimes, they are during the workday.
Trustee Creo.
I think I've expressed how I feel about committees, but if the consensus of the Board, I see their value, I just, it's, it's hard. I agree with trustee Solis, Administration's going to have to allocate service, support for that, but that's not our decision. That's then the direction of the superintendent. We form the committees. I would recommend that we do three, not more than four. Otherwise, it's too many meetings, and quite frankly, I mean, thinking selfishly, I can't commit to sitting in so many committees. And depending on how the committees, what that committee work looks like, and what value and authority we as a Board provide to that committee when bringing these items back, I'm not interested in doing work twice. That doesn't seem efficient or a good use of our student, of our, of our money. And so I would support having a committee related to Board Policies and the like, facility and budget, student wellness and safety, and I think all of them, making sure that there's a discussion about student achievement and how that impacts all the decisions that we made in each of those committees, because we know that it does, but we never have that, that's not our focus in our discussion, and it needs to be. If we're not reaching student achievement, then what are we doing as an educational institution? That is literally our number one job, and we're not doing very good at it, so we have to have those conversations.
Trust. Oh, we're, an extension of the time. Do I have a motion to extend the, the time decision?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Krefon. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. Trustee Mailin.
Yeah, thank you. I, I kind of agree with Ms. Creo. I'm not a huge fan of these Subcommittee. I think there, there are a lot of work. If we are going to do one, I think we should keep it as minimal as possible, one, maybe two. Let's figure it out, get control over it and make sure they work before we decide to put all this effort into four of them. I think these are all important. I don't, I can't just choose one, but I think we can come to terms with a few to try out, and that's, that's just my point.
Trustee Solis.
If I remember correctly, there was consensus on the Board to have the committee, so I'm not going to even talk about whether we should have committees. That boat has sailed. I think it would be a good idea if we have a trial period and for you to go ahead and say, we're going to reevaluate in three months, six months, whatever it is, to see, A, is the, are the committees working as extended, as expected? Do we need to change the, the makeup of the committee? Define it more, whatever, tweak it if we have to tweak it. The other thing, I would like it to be made clear to the committees that they are making recommendations to the Board. The Board is still the deciding factor of the recommendation. Sometimes people tend to forget that. As, as well as it needs to be made clear that nothing open to the ballot is within the jurisdiction of these committees. In other words, I don't want to see a political statement coming out of these committees. These committees are here to help move the district forward of internal issues, not external.
So in terms of like a period, I would definitely suggest an evaluation after a year. My expectation would not be that any committee meets, most likely looking at all the other ones. It's going to be two to four times a year, depending on the, what the focus of that committee is. I, I don't think a shorter time period unfortunately would give us enough time to even evaluate. So I would definitely suggest we try it for a year. Again, we're like a lot of our neighboring districts, we're, we're one of the few ones that, of our size that don't do this yet, and so I think, I, I think clearly understanding the expectation from us, but, but if we, if we hold our staff, our students, our community to high expectations, I, I think it's very, very fair for us to be part of that conversation as well. Trustee Krefon.
Thank you, President Singh. So I'm going to reverse my comment, since we're narrowing down our, our number of committees, the number one issue is student achievement, so let's have that be one of the three to four, because we are seeing very different ELA and math scores at our sites. They're all taking a data, a data-driven approach, but they can differ in what is working, what's not. So if we as Board members can do a better job of understanding what's working, we can hopefully improve our student achievement. So how does the Board feel about that being one of the Subcommittee? Someone who wants there to be Subcommittee.
I agree.
So my only hesitation with student achievement is, I'm not an expert in education. I know education law. I went through education. I have a Juris Doctorate. But I don't know how much value I can add as a trustee to question, are these the appropriate metrics? How are you using this data? I, I, I agree, student achievement is our number one priority, and we should be having those discussions. But we need to think about these committees in how do we operate our meetings more efficiently? And how do we get work done more efficiently? As Subcommittee, we're going to be providing recommendations to the Board as a whole. We're not making decisions. So typically, what that looks like is, the easiest example, Board Policies. Instead of having two rounds of Board Policies, they're sent to the Committee. Here are the gamut recommendations. Here is what we're doing. Here is what we're doing. What are the questions? What are the revisions? So instead of me asking the questions, making those recommendations during an information item, I make them in the subcommittee. We tweak language, we analyze, and then we have a final product that we bring to the board and say, here are the recommendations. Ideally, a board member would then from that committee say, this is the discussion we had, this is why we're making these recommendations, this is in the best interest of our students, blah, blah, blah. Discussion, item gets approved. It should not be to, it is to question, but it's to add to that whatever is already being done within our authority. We as a board establish policy, provide direction, we make fund allocation. So I just, I hesitate with student achievement because I'm not sure that we can add anything. I mean, I can direct and say, teach students in groups of ten. Why? Because I think ten is a good number? I don't, I don't know how helpful that would be.
I, I, I think trustee Corio, where, where I could see it and, and definitely started the direction that you're, you're, you're even suggesting, I think largely alignment where oftentimes we get contracts. And so for instance, I could see those related to student achievement, and that's why for me it was like student life, student wellness, where sometimes I, I know people have asked me or like deeper dives into some of the subcontractees and, and others, this would be a place for, just as you said, a subcommittee of the board to really make a, a deep dive to, to ask the questions and then make a recommendation to the rest of the board as, as you fit. So I guess I, I, I agree like in terms of like overall, I, I think to me, it, it has to be aligned with what are the, what are the purview, what is the purview of the board and, and increasing the efficiency, but also creating an opportunity for those that have maybe a particular interest to a little bit, learn a little bit more so that they can inform the rest of the board in their, in their recommendations.
Okay. So then I think we need to think more broadly of it. And then once we do have a recommendation for our next board meeting, then we need to clearly, in writing, articulate what the authority is. Trustee Solis has explained, you know, we all know what our authority is, but I think we need to be consistent and have some document that governs what we can and cannot do.
Agreed. So, so again, I, I wanna, I wanna move some, something forward. So, so, and obviously trustee Krefan had a, a little bit more of a, a, a more exhaustive list than, than mine, mine were really around, at least suggestion again, where it's around student achievement, life and wellness. Another one looking at board policies, bylaws, party and potentially community engagement. A third around finance, budget and facilities, and a fourth around a, a joint, a joint body with some of our surrounding.
President Singh, I would support your four.
Trustees Sellers. Other comments? So then I'm going to propose these four.
So are you moving this forward as an action item to make that proposal at the next board meeting?
That, that's, yeah.
All right.
Trust, sorry, superintendent Davis.
As part of your board bylaws, we would also need you to be really clear on the purpose and definition of that work. I appreciate you kind of figuring out what the advisory capacity is so that as staff we know what this role and function is that, that is gonna draw us into these, into these meetings, how many times per year, who the participants will be and what the reporting expectations are of the group. And then if I can get clarification as to whether these, as we're preparing the calendar for the organizational meeting, do these replace the workshops or are these in addition to the four board workshops, study sessions that we already have? And so having that clarification will be really important for us to plan.
Would, would there be a, a desire, I'm, I'm, I'll definitely make the, sort of the time to, could we have a subcommittee to make a, a proposal at, at the next board meeting?
I mean, I think to expedite, we would need to, but we'd have to have volunteers now so that, because it doesn't require formal action to have a subcommittee, which is maximum three, then bring a recommendation and it needs to be dealt with by next board meeting.
Volunteer's tribute.
All right. So, so it looks like we have three volunteers, trustee Sellers, trustee Krefan and myself. We will bring an action item at the next board meeting. Thank you. And next, we turn to advanced planning.
Calendar's attached.
Additional information and closing comments? I, I did want to make one, I'd be remiss to not share a few words about Assistant Superintendent Jack Kalijan, who joined us at the last meeting, as, as his last meeting with the, with the school district. For a quarter of a century, Jack has served this community in various, and his students in various capacities, a teacher, a principal. In fact, my first engagement with him was actually a principal when he was at Central East. For the last six years here, here on this board, where I've had a chance to see him as our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, I've seen him really guide our district in some difficult times, but, but also really in, in some positive places as well. So I just definitely wanted to acknowledge and appreciate him for his years of service and, and wish him all the best in his new ventures. And with that, a reminder, our next meeting, our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, December tenth, here at six P M. for closed session, seven P M. for public session, here in the Central Unified School District, District Room thirteen, and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.